Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we will be doing the, this will be our budget workshop. So we'll begin. Madam Secretary, please call the role.
District two, President Lanis. District three, Vice President Powell. District one, Mr. Blue. District four, Ms. Stewart. District five, Mr. Lewis. District six, Mr. Russ.
President.
District seven, Mr. Godey.
President.
District eight, Ms. Kennison. District nine, Mr. Martin.
President.
All right, so for tonight, if you look at item B1, presentation of the board workshop budget, we will ask for the Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Kelly Lopez. Please come up.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Narcisse. Tonight, I will be discussing the 2223 General Fund Revised Budget. As many of you know, the General Fund Budget must be revised each year. The purpose is to update and review revenue and expenditure projections originally made in May of the previous year. It also updates the fund balance since the previous fiscal year has now been closed and audited. This chart provides an overview of the revenues and expenditures over three important points in the budget cycle: actual 2021-22 results, proposed 2223 budget, and the current revised 2022-2023 budget being brought to you tonight. Actual numbers are those that are complete and audited. Proposed numbers are those approved by the board in July of 2022 and were projections for what would happen in the current year. Revised numbers allow the district to review revenues and expenditures and make adjustments for what is expected to happen by the end of the fiscal year. As you can see, we are anticipating an ending balance of $16.7 million for the current fiscal year. This is an increase of $14.7 million from the projected fund balance amount. As stated earlier, the projected unassigned fund balance for the year is anticipated to increase by $16.7 million. The projected assigned fund balance for the year is $35.5 million. The total fund balance inclusive of inventory is projected $109.2 million. This will give the district a fund balance as a percentage of revenues of 20%. As you know, the board policy is 15%, and the Finance Department at the state LDOE is 7.5%. The reason these numbers are so important is the general point is to make payroll. With $109.2 million, that is four months of payrolls that are available to us in case of a catastrophe such as COVID, the flood, things that have happened before. Assigned funds are those that have been set aside by management to cover costs such as risk management claims or medical fund issues. Total revenues are anticipated to increase by $29.9 million over proposed 2022-2023. The vast majority of this increase is due to the significant increase in sales tax. The Finance Department is monitoring this closely, determined the best course of action for the proposed 2023-2024 budget. Total expenditures are projected to increase by $15.2 million. There are many different factors in this determination. For instructional services, the most significant change was a decrease of $1.6 million in special program ESL teachers. The district has worked tirelessly to ensure that all of our classrooms have certified teachers to provide the best instruction to our students. Support service program increased by $17.2 million. There was an increase of $2.4 million in guidance to serve and to assist our students with their instructional and emotional needs. An increase of $1.1 million in instructional services to provide additional staff on school campuses. An additional $2.5 in school administration to ensure that there are leaders available to all of our students and all staff. Plant service increased by $8.4 million due to increased needs of aging facilities, as well as Kennelworth, Capital High, and JK Haynes coming online in August. Further, utilities costs have increased by $3.5 million. Student transportation remained flat, and fuel is being monitored. Central services increased by $1.5 million. The vast majority of these increases were due to the Information Technology Department bringing on JK Haynes, Capital, and Kennelworth. Use of other funds increased by .7 million due to an increase in our Type II charter schools. The strategic plan and the six keys of the district rely on four areas of focus: academics, support services, operations, and partnerships. Through the work of the administration, Esser and General Fund have been expended in unison to align with these goals. The following items are all-inclusive of the funding sources. So academics. General Fund academic staff accounts for $187.8 million. This is inclusive of our instructional staff and paraprofessionals in our classrooms. Charter schools account for $136.9 million. Our partnership with all types of charter schools assists the district as a whole in providing quality instructional services to our students. Early education staff accounts for approximately $1.1 million. Over the past two years, the district has expanded its portfolio of early education centers and is growing the availability of this to all students in our district. Literacy support staff accounts for $1.8 million. These staff members work in alignment with teachers of record to provide additional literacy services to our students. The district's literacy goal is aligned with LDOE and State Superintendent Romly. Curriculum and teaching staff accounts for $12.9 million. This has been provided additional curriculum supports for our teaching staff. It's also provided additional fine arts and alternative education staff. ESL support services accounts for $0.8 million. This allows our staff to assist those that are English learners and try to make the transition to the English-speaking schools easier. General Fund support staff accounts for $66.5 million. This is inclusive of our school office staff, our school administrators, our school counselors, and our pupil appraisal staff. These allow the children the opportunity to be assisted with any learning behaviors that they may have. General Fund fine arts, athletics, and summer camps account for $6.9 million. This is inclusive of percentage stipends that are paid to our band directors and to our coaches so that they may expend the extra time for these children's interest after school. It provides for elite remediation teachers as the state has an unfunded mandate that we must provide remediation and summer school to those CIR, UIR school students in both literacy and mathematics. It also provides for the fine arts funding for each of our schools that is overseen by our fine arts director. Expanded learning time accounts for approximately $0.6 million and provides for tutoring services for those that may be struggling with this particular subject. Parent involvement staff accounts for approximately $1 million. These staff members work with parents to ensure they have a positive experience in our schools and assist them in navigating the system to ensure every child receives a quality education. MTSS supports is new to our district. Dr. Burris heads up our multi-tiered system of support team that provides social and emotional needs of students that have been so critical after the COVID pandemic. Staff development retention provides stipends for staff members, which is the largest paid out in December of 2022. If you remember, the board approved it. It was $3,000, as well as professional development stipends for attending programs after school. General Fund operations staff includes your business services, plant services, security, transportation, accountability, public information, human resources, and information technology. Child nutrition provides for the nutritional needs of all of our students. Technology not only provides the wiring and the servers for our schools, they provide technology equipment for every staff member and every student in the district. Student-related materials and supplies are necessary for our children to learn. They are inclusive of our library books, materials and supplies, and textbooks. The past two years, the district has provided $200 gift cards to every teacher of record, to school aides, to provide for their materials of instruction in their classrooms. The superintendent's vision included improving the efficiency of the central office. The opportunity to update both the ERP system for the Business and Human Resources Departments and the Transportation Departments are underway. While it's been a huge push for the district, we're excited for the new opportunities. The district has many partnerships to assist us in our work. We have partnered with multiple universities in the city and the area to provide dual enrollment for our high school students, assist in the focused choice school curriculum, and provide externs to assist with students at larger schools. We have partnered with first-choice therapy to ensure that all of our children requiring physical and occupational therapies are serviced properly. Our facilities contractor has ensures that all of our students go to school in a clean and safe environment. Curriculum supports and online data platforms such as ANET, Achieve 3000, and DreamBox assist us in teaching our children by using data to determine their needs. J-Campus allows us to track student data and easily report it to LDOE. Arizona State allows our virtual students to earn an associate's degree by the time they finish their senior year. Professional development partnerships allow us to work with experts in their fields to provide outstanding ideas and methods to increase our ability to reach our students. Fine arts partnerships with Kids Orchestra, Manship Theater, and Arts Council allow us to provide opportunities to students who may not have them in their normal day-to-day. Early childhood partnerships with Early Childhood Education Collaborative and instructional partners have allowed new opportunities for what I like to call our youngest customers. So as we continue to implement the strategic plan, we anticipate to align our budget planning and our expenditures to these main focus areas. Any questions? It's a small audience tonight.
Okay. Thank you so much for sharing. All right, so first, we have in the queue, Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Could you go back to that first slide with the revenue and expenses table on it?
This one, or revenues?
Yes, ma'am. I was just curious why the facilities line is zero under expenditures?
So that is not facilities as in facilities. That is an extra, per the LAPD, we have a separate coding. That is, if we bought land, if we bought a building, that is where it would be. And it is very, it's very confusing. It absolutely is. But that's why the facilities line item is zero is because we did not buy land and we did not buy a building.
And so where in the expenditures line is like, you know, maintenance contracts and all that?
Support.
Support.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, one second.
No, that's, this is actual.
Yeah, well, I just want to learn a little more about it. I just didn't want to ask a question you were going to ask. All right. You know, in terms of the projections for sales tax revenue in particular, I know from dealing with state government for a long time, those are always kind of iffy guessworks. And so can you tell me what we should be thinking about once we're asked to approve this budget? How should we be thinking about that in terms of, are we overestimating and underestimating, hitting the sweet spot?
You know, it's tricky. Used to, I could tell you, sales tax almost within a few hundred thousand. I mean, it was pretty consistent. It has not been since COVID. And inflation, it's a double-edged sword. Yes, you're making more sales tax because everything costs more. But since everything costs more, are people buying more or less? So we have increased it for this year, increased it significantly because what we do is I track it on a monthly basis. Now, you know that sales tax is 45 days in arrears. So I will not see July's sales tax until August. But with that, I track it on both the calendar and the fiscal year because I like to just kind of see a pattern. It has gone up significantly. I am hoping, I've been researching Dr. Lawrence Scott. I've always been a huge fan of his, in reading his reports. He is projecting East Baton Rouge to be very profitable this year. We have, the Amazon is opening. We have several projects, construction projects, oil projects, things on the river. So while, while the Department of Revenue is expecting it to start decreasing, I am leaving it, remaining it pre-flat for next year, approximately this amount, a little bit more, about 0.4% more. I think it's going to hold up another year, '24, '25. We'll see. Who knows? But for right now, I think Baton Rouge is holding up. People are still spending. People are still going eating, drinking, buying. Hopefully, the football season is good. That it's always really good for me. I love a good football season. Keeps my husband happy, and it keeps my sales tax good. So, Brian Kelly. So I'm hoping it's going to stay. I'm projecting it's going to stay pretty consistent next year.
And then kind of a related question. What do we generally do with the, with the amount of money that we have in excess of expenditures at the end of the year? If we, I heard you say we, by policy, we're shooting for, you know, basically 15%.
Correct.
Surplus. And so what do we do? If it's 20%, what do we do with that 5% extra?
So it basically goes into the savings account. Your fund balance is your savings account. If something happens, Baton Rouge High burns down tomorrow, God forbid. We have that surplus. Yes, we'll go into the negative, but we have that surplus to keep us going.
But wouldn't, right, no, I understand. That's why we have generally the surplus. But we wouldn't want a surplus of an entire year's worth of revenue, for example.
Right.
That means we're leaving money on the table. It could be helped to students. So if our, if our policy is 15%, you know, and we're going to hit 20, well, let's, should we spend some of that, you know, or is our real goal to get six months of expenditures in the bank? And then at what point do we, as a board, have to decide how, how we want to spend that money?
Sure. Well, you can put the funds in assigned funds, and you can put them, like if you say, "I would like to increase our medical fund to ensure that it is stable for our retirees and for our active employees." You can absolutely put it in assigned funds, and we can transfer that fund, those funds during the year into the medical funds, since we are self-funded. I'm an accountant. I'm really conservative. So I would love to see six months of salary. Salary is about $24 million a month. If anything happens, we have that money. But that is the pleasure of the board. Whatever the board would like to do is what we will do.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Mr. Godey.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lopez, for pulling together all the. I just wanted to go back to the subject of the, the reserve, General Fund Reserve. At $109 million, my impression is that's the highest we've ever been historically. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Because I just want everyone to recognize, you know, a couple of years ago, we had a $29 million deficit that drove that down to under, what, $40 million?
It's like $43.
$43 million. So the last couple of years, I think the public needs to recognize that we've been very good stewards of the money and have built this back up. And in addition to what my colleague, Mr. Martin, was saying, I do think that we need to be careful about getting that fund too big because we have property taxes and sales tax renewals and things like that. And so, and we have lots of needs.
Sure.
And so it's, you know, stocking it away into a savings account more than what we need. And I'm not trying to be, you know, 15% is a great, great number in doing that. So that's all good. Couple of other questions I had. Let's see, where was it? Bear with me just a second. On the numbers for the revenues, I know one of the issues that we have is that, you know, we had this lot of Esser money flowing in. And with the Esser money, we had indirect cost.
We did, yes.
That we get. And my impression was that was like 20-something percent.
It was 24.2. Dr. Bethley could probably give it to you much further, but about 24%, yeah.
Okay. I'm having trouble equating because I'm under the impression that we had about $100-something million-plus Esser money this year, in this current year. And I only see like $18 or $19 million in here. Maybe Dr. Bethley's coming up here, trying to explain that. I'm trying to understand the flow of the Esser money and the indirect overheads flowing back to our general fund.
Sure. So I'm not certain I understand your question, but you're asking about the indirect costs?
Yes. How much, so in '22, '23, this year, how much Esser money will we be spending?
Okay, for indirect costs or?
How much, in total, and how much in indirect costs?
Okay. So I have this chart I can share with you.
Okay.
It'll make it easier, but.
You know I get into the numbers. I'm sorry.
Okay. So the district should receive all of our indirect costs in June for Esser two because we should have filed all of our claims for Esser two. And that should be about, wait, I have it in my notes.
Please, we got time. Please go get it. And maybe this is a Ms. Lopez question. When do we recognize? Because I'm concerned about recognizing spending and revenue versus cash flow. When do we recognize Esser spending or federal grant spending? When do we recognize the spending? And when do we recognize the revenue? When it's earned or when it's paid?
When it's paid. So we recognize the expenditure immediately because it comes directly of our cash flow. And then, of course, we recognize the money when it comes back in, and then the indirect cost comes back in with the state funding.
And is that by accounting rule? Or is that the way we do it? Because revenue recognition would say you record the revenue when you've earned it.
Right. But it's the modified, we haven't earned it until the state pays it.
But you have. The state just hasn't paid it. To me, we're mixing cash. To me, we're counting expenses on, as incurred basis, but counting revenue as on received basis. And those two don't match.
It's modified accrual. The reason we do that is because the state can deny it at any time. They don't have to, I mean, if they don't approve it, then we don't get the money, but we're still out the money.
I get that, but it just seems like, I'd rather take the risk of them not. It's, to me, it's messing up the flow through the books because I can't equate, because when I spend, I earn the indirect overhead.
Sure.
But I'm not direct, I'm not recognizing the indirect overhead when I spent the money. I'm recognizing it when I receive it. So those two don't match up.
Sure.
And it makes it very, very difficult to follow the numbers through the system.
Right, right. And especially with a grant like Esser because it was multi-year.
Exactly.
99% of our grants are one-year. Title I resets.
I get it.
It's easy to calculate. You know about what's going to come through and everything else. Yes, Esser has been trickier because of that. It's the multiple year.
But why, why do we do it that way? I mean, what is the, I just don't see the reason to do it that way. How many times do we get denied any significant portion of our money?
As far as I know, we haven't been denied any of it.
Okay. And so why are we separating expenditure from receipts? That's just a bad accounting. I'm not understanding that.
Sure. It's the modified accounting that the auditors, we've always done. We've gotten clean audits. This is just how we do it.
But I know, I know you've got a clean audit. I know it because, I know you have a clean audit because all the numbers end up being there.
Right.
But are they, are they saying that's the only way to do it in the audit? Or the way you've done it, you've done it very well?
I can research it.
Okay. Because that gets, when I'm trying to go through the numbers, that gets extremely confusing trying to track what is happening where. Because this year is a perfect example because I'm trying to understand what Esser spending we've done in this year and then try to equate that to what is the indirect overhead that we received this year. And what I'm seeing is you're not recognizing all of that. And then come next year, I'm going to spend, but I'm going to end up recognizing more next year because, and so it's, it's, it's not putting expenses and revenues together. And that's one of the basic accounting.
Right.
So I don't know if there's something we can do to fix that, but.
Absolutely. Reach out to the auditors and see how other districts are doing it.
But I don't really care how other districts are doing it. What's the right way to do it? And, you know, is marrying, since there's almost a zero chance of us not getting the money, and it is immaterial in the scheme of things, why wouldn't we marry them? And can you give me a reason why we shouldn't as opposed to a reason why we can't, you know? And because that just seems to be, that's part of what causes a lot of confusion is we don't have expenses and revenues equated. Ms. Bethley, you went, got your numbers?
Yes, sir. So to answer your question, the exact indirect cost is 26.74%. And by the end of June, we would have cleared $14 million in indirect costs for the district. That's with Esser two, Action one, and Esser two, Action two.
What about Esser three?
With Esser three, we haven't claimed as much as we like to, but we have spent some of the funds. And with, we have about $65 million left to spend and claim for Esser three, Action two. Okay.
And so what, so let's say we spent all of that and received all of that. What should we be getting back next year that we haven't recognized this year?
With Esser three.
Well, and Esser two, is Esser two end this year?
Yes. Esser two ends September 2023. But we are filing all, most of the claims in June because we will be finished with the expenditures.
So the $14 million would include all of the Esser two?
Yes, sir.
So, but I thought Esser two was like, well, no, that's about right. I'm trying to remember.
So.
Is that 20-something percent of the total Esser two?
No, that's, Esser two is a total of, it was a total of like 70, just an estimate, 70 million with the two buckets of funds. It was two buckets of funds.
Okay. So that's about the $14 million. And then Esser three is what?
So Esser three, Action one, was $31 million, an estimate. And then Esser three, Action two, was $127 million, estimate.
And that's what we're going to all be spending next year?
Well, we have expended some of the funds, so we have about $65 million left in Esser three.
So we spent about $80 million?
Yes, sir.
And so 20% of $80 million should be 20-something million dollars. And I don't see that 20-something million dollars in indirect costs flowing back to the general fund. That's, that's where my, that's where my math is falling down.
Okay. That's because we have to file the claims. In order for us to get the indirect costs, we have to file the claims. And we haven't filed the claims because the expenditures have not been, most of them have not been received. And then a lot of it also is in salaries. So we have to wait until the salaries are also in cover.
So next year, I should be looking at 20 million plus, or a lot more than that. I should be looking for like $30 million coming in next year in indirect costs.
Yes, sir. By, by June of next year, we should have, we should have a total of indirect costs. It should be about $26 million total. That's with Esser three, Action two.
And all of Esser two is gone after this year? No, it goes till September. But you say it's basically gone?
Right. And Esser three, we have until September 2024, September 30th, 2024, to spend.
So we should be looking at least 20-something million dollars just from Esser in the indirect funds coming back to the general fund?
Yes, June of 2024, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Those are important numbers because they're millions of dollars in that. And I'm sorry if I got accounting, I got accounting-wise in all this. But, but thank you very much. And thank you very much, Ms. Lopez. But, uh, but thank you very much, and thank you very much, Ms. Lopez. I hope, you know, it's just, it gets very, very confusing if you can't follow the flow. And when we split, split expenses and revenues, it makes it even more confusing because you gotta go back to prior years and that sort of thing, what was spent here versus what was earned here, and things like that. So I think we're doing ourselves a disservice and a confusion factor in trying to be uber-conservative when we don't have a history of it happening. And even if you want to recognize 95% of it, you know, that'd be okay too if you want to hold back something as a, as a contingency or something like that. But, but trying to marry those up would be very, very helpful.
I'll speak to our auditors about the best way to do it.
Okay, and I don't know if that affects your revised budget or not, but if you could speak to them before we had to pass it, I'd be very much appreciative before the final passage. Let's see, I think that was all that I had. That's it, thank you very much, and thank you for a very thorough presentation, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, and I waive my right to speak, and Mr. Rust.
Okay, just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly how our fund balance works. So fund balance should be a percentage of general fund revenues. So the State Department requires that 7.5%, and our policy is 15. Is that a percentage of budgeted, like what our budget for general fund revenue is? Is that how we?
Yes.
Okay. So we, let's say we're coming up, we're gonna set the budget for next year. We're gonna decide this is gonna be our general fund budget of revenues, not expenditures, right? So we're looking at how much money are we gonna take in as a organization? And that includes MFP plus tax plan that's not, that's related to, no?
Not the tax plan, it's just, it's the, the general fund portion of sales tax and property taxes.
That's what I was looking for.
Yes.
Yeah.
I knew where you were going.
Yeah, I'm getting up to speed here, okay. That was my main question, just wanted to make sure I'm getting this right.
That's how it works.
Thank you, are there any additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none, thank you so much, Ms. Lopez. And we will adjourn this meeting until our 5 o'clock start time for the Committee of the Whole.
Good afternoon. This is Thursday, today is Thursday, May 4, 2023. This is the Committee of the Whole. We will begin with our invocation, which will be led by School Board Member Mike Goday, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by School Board Member Nathan Russ. Let us stand.
Please bow. Heavenly Father, thanking you for giving us this wonderful day. Thank you for all the wonderful teachers and staff that we work with and take care of our children every day. Thank you for the parents that put their trust in us to educate their children. And thank you for all the wonderful works that you've given us and the wonderful blessings you have bestowed upon us. May you keep us safe as we move forward into the summer and enjoy some time off, but also remember that you are the key to all happiness. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thou teach me not to read.
Thank you. This meeting is now called to order, and we will enter into our roll call.
District 2, President Lanis.
Present.
District 3, Vice President Powell.
Present.
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District 4, Ms. Stewart.
Present.
District 5, Mr. Lewis.
Present.
District 6, Mr. Russ.
Present.
District 7, Mr. Goday.
Present.
District 8, Ms. Kennison.
Here.
District 9, Mr. Martin.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. We will now take a look at Item B, Receiving for Information Only, a Notice of Public Meeting for Leaving Millages. And do I need to read the additional information in support of it? Okay. This notice is hereby given that the Parish School Board of the Parish of East Baton Rouge, State of Louisiana, acting as the governing authority of Consolidated School District Number 1 of the Parish of East Baton Rouge, State of Louisiana, the district, plans to consider and adopt at its meeting on Thursday, May 18, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. at the Parish School Board Office, 1050 South Foster Drive, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, the resolution as required by law for the Office of the Assessor no later than June 1, 2023, for the purpose of levying millages effective on the 2023 assessment roll. Okay, and so there are no actions to be fulfilled, correct? Okay, all right. Moving on to Item C, Items for Consideration. C1, Attendant Zone High Schools. Consider... Okay. Dr. Narcisse.
Vice President Powell, Board Member Nathan Russ would like to pull the Use of Facilities policy for further study to next month. That's item number 14, so would you like to remove it from the agenda?
So is there any action that needs to take place in regards to that?
No, no action. You can accept it.
Okay. All right, so I accept that decision to remove item number 14 from today's agenda. Thank you. Okay, once again, C1, Attendant Zone High Schools, consideration of a request for the approval of a change in the attendant zones for incoming 9th graders for school year '23, '24, and thereafter for Broadmoor High School, Estruma High School, and Terra High School as a result of the required attendant zone for incoming 9th grade students at Capital High School. Is there a motion? Okay, it has been moved by School Board Member Lewis and seconded by President Lanis. We will now enter into comments by the board. Okay, is there a presentation that supports Item 1? Okay, so there is no presentation. Once again, are there any comments from the board at this time? All right, Ms. Kennison.
I have some questions, I guess, about the attendant zone and the required attendance for the incoming 9th graders. If we just took the school back, when are the families or when have they been notified that they're 9th graders will be going there?
Ms. O'Kosky.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. So in February, you guys approved...
The package for Capital High School, and with that was a new attendant zone for incoming 9th graders there. And so what happens is, right now, we have a scenario where we have competing sets of attendant zones on the books. Because when Capital was removed from the district, it was jigsawed or split up into Broadmoor, Terra, and Estruma to absorb. Now it's time to return to Capital. In good faith, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders are going to be able to stay. I'm already on a sports team. I've paid for my ring. I have my Lederman's jacket. I'm in the band, yada, yada, yada. For 9th graders, because the way that it was approved in February, they have a required attendant zone for Capital, we're going to eliminate the 9th grade from the Terra, Broadmoor, and Estruma. With your action tonight, or two weeks at the formal meeting, then staff will generate letters to those parents as they roll over into the next building.
So they don't know yet?
It would be presumptuous because you haven't approved it formally yet.
Okay, so it just seems like if I'm one of those families and my 8th grader is looking to go to high school right now, they're thinking they're going somewhere else.
They could.
And then...
If I may, Ms. Kennison, sorry to interrupt, but Mr. Brookhouse and team have, they have done parent night at Capital Middle?
Ms. O'Kosky, I can answer that with the team. The Board Member Kennison, the team has met with the CEF, which is the current foundation that's running Capital, and we've been working collaboratively with them to notify families, go through a list, and we have some specific things that have been done to begin in the notification of families. And is Dr. Stovall in here? No?
So how are we notifying them if it hasn't been approved yet?
Well, once the school was approved, that we were going to take them back, and the board accepted the school back, then we started that process to just talk with them, to look at the list, to see, let them know, here are their options until board approval.
Okay, so they know that they have options?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I would love to hear from those 150-some-odd families what they understand about what's happening. And what I understand is that there is a choice. The 9th graders don't actually have to go to Capital because of the, whatchamacallit, SPS. But from what I also understand is the other three surrounding schools also are low-performing schools, so...
There's another mechanism.
What's the, if, you know, if I'm the parent, what are, is there an option for my child to go to a successful school?
You just named one of them. Anyone who is placed at a school with a certain letter grade is given options to a higher-performing school with a higher-performing letter grade. Mr. Johnson here with me works with the federal program staff, once those schools are identified, to generate that school list of our AB, some higher C schools that have that capacity to take students. But there's another one that lesser-known that you might not be aware of, that we have exercised in situations like this, and that's the administrative transfer process. A parent can come into the central office and have a reason for an administrative transfer. It goes through the superintendent's office. It's routed through our office with attendant zones. Mr. Brookhouse and the superintendent ultimately sign off on it. So... So I'm anticipating a question here. Maybe I have an older sibling at Tara, and so I want my kids to stay together. You'd put in a request for administrative transfer with appropriate address and demographic information, and then it goes through our team, and as long as there's space, those things usually check out. It may also be that I was kind of on track to do this certain pathway or program, but I didn't know that this was going to happen. And so you give us that documentation. You explain that information, and it goes through the transfer process.
I'd like to request that when we officially notify these families, that we also officially notify them of this option. I know that it's not really the easiest way to go about it, but a lot of people don't understand that they have options, and things come really quickly from all over the place. So I'd like to make sure that all 150-odd kids, their parents, know these things that we're talking about.
Sure. Historically, when we do letters such as this, there's always a contact number or email address to call to talk through your scenario. So we will most certainly do that.
And then what are the high school options?
I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Am I asking? Of course, you know, you'll be able to come back for round two.
Fine.
Can I just respond? There's two schools that are actually close, in a two-mile radius to that area. McKinley High School is within two miles from there, and I think Madison Prep is the other one. Is that correct?
Madison's a Type 2 charter, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Blue.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you answered this, but I just want to make sure I understood it correctly, that the attendant signs for Capital were returned to where they were before
Correct.
we lost that school. Okay. So that, and I'm glad we have options. I imagine most of the families will be happy to have the option to go to a school closer to home. I know Broadmoor and Tara are pretty good ways away from there. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. If you can, some of the questions that Ms. Kennison asked, and just so I'm sure I'm understanding it right. So what we're really looking at is kids who, in the current attendant zones, would have gone to Tara or one of several other schools. And now, as I said, they're in eighth grade right now, and the parents are anticipating going to go to Tara because that's what the attendant zone is today. And now we're telling them, you won't be going to Tara. You'll be going to Capital. And many parents will probably be very excited to do that, right? But there may be some, as you say, that doesn't. So I think, you know, I wanted to further, Ms. Kennison suggested that when we notify, the parents don't just say, oh, well, here's a generic contact information. I want to make sure we're going to put in there. There is an ability. If you've been anticipating for four years that you were going to go to Tara, and this is a problem for you, there are options, and here's some of the options, and here's your contact about that. Not just a general, oh, if you have any questions at all, contact. Is that the plan?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Those letters are typically generated from Mr. Brickhouse's office. However, we tag-team with him, and many times, the phone number you'll get is Mr. Johnson behind me, who's going to pull up a map and work with the parent.
Okay. I would certainly encourage us to do that. Thank you very much.
And Board Member Martin, if I could just also add, because although we're taking back Capital and they have a lower grade, if students decide to stay at their current school and they're in that pathway, they have that option too. As you know, with the state, if you have a lower grade, you get the option of going to other schools.
Thank you. I think you've answered my question already with the possibility of an administrative transfer because I was going to ask about if there are siblings that are already attending those schools, would the younger sibling get the opportunity? And I think you've answered that already. So I'm in agreement with my colleagues in stating, as long as we, you know, make these things, these notes clear in the communication and correspondence with parents, then we are doing our due diligence. So thank you.
Sure.
All right. Mr. Lewis.
Ms. Okowski.
Yes, sir.
Past experience, middle school kids are automatically rolled over
Yes.
into what would be their homeschool.
Yes.
That may not be the case.
We're working on that, Coach.
Okay. And the question that I really want to ask is, if that happens, if a child is automatically rolled over into Tara, but Capital is their new homeschool, most guidance counselors work 10 months. Am I correct?
Yes.
And so by the time the final report cards come out and all that's done, those guidance counselors are gone for the summer.
Understood. But what you may, what people don't often know is that we have a behind-the-scenes rollover team here. This man serves on it. A couple of key administrators in various departments serve on it who are 12-month employees. To your point, we might not know the child. But we are proactively flagging students right now for rollover. So he has a printout of every student who hits in that area. He has on him what that school is. So when you guys do that, they will, behind the scenes in the computer, go and flag those students. And so they will alter, once this gets formally approved, they will alter the attendant zone. Now, you and I both worked in schools and know sometimes life happens, and sometimes the computer kicks one out or misses one. And those scenarios, again, will work with the parent. But there's also a Capital High Transition Team that's meeting here once a week on Wednesdays afternoons, 1 o'clock. And Mr. Johnson serves on it. Several of the staff serve on it, and they're planning some parent informational meetings. So all of these, you guys are helping to inform our question and answer and our communication to parents because these are some things that can be said, hey, if once you get this information, you have an error or an issue, call this number. Reach out to this person. Because we have some 12-month folks over the summer who can help to fix those situations.
What's happened in the past, a parent would have to go to the
School to drop.
rollover school, drop that child, go to the new homeschool, enroll that child, and that puts an undue burden on parents
Understood.
who are working and having to take time off from work and do those things. So I commend you on being proactive with the rollover process.
Thank you, sir. We're also exploring the online registration portal for families of Capital High School to try to prevent some of that back and forth.
Thank you. President Lanis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you, Ms. Okowski. First off, you know, I always love your energy that you bring inside of the room.
Thank you, Mr. Lanis. Appreciate that.
I just wanted to remind our Board that when we approved the priority zones a few months ago, our staff went to work to spell out what those guidelines look like, and you can find that on our website if you go and visit it. It spells out everything from the, what are the guidelines for rising 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th graders currently enrolled at the school, the enrollment process for parents, rising ninth graders, priorities zone. Rising ninth graders is going to go into focus choice, whether they're applied, accepted, or they are assigned. And it also spells out students that are currently enrolled at the school, what's the process, and students that are not currently enrolled at the school. So I just wanted to remind us that we also had as a guide, if you need to see what that process looks like. Thank you again, Ms. Okowski.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other board comments in the queue, are there any comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none from the public, we return to the Board. Any further comments or questions from the Board? Okay. Ms. Kennison.
Can I just request that I get a copy of those letter, of that letter before it goes out?
All right. Okay. Seeing no further comments in the queue, we will now entertain a vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Item 2, McKinley Elementary. Consideration of a Request for the Approval of the Following: A, Closure of University Terrace Elementary; B, Closure of Buchanan Elementary; C, Opening of McKinley Elementary with a New Attendant Zone encompassing the combined area of the former attendant zones for Buchanan Elementary and McKinley Elementary School. All right. Okay. It has been moved by Mr. Goday. Is there a second? Okay. And seconded by Mr. Martin. We will now entertain comments from the Board. Mr. Goday.
Yes. Thank you, Vice President Powell. Ms. Okowski, just a quick question for you. As we close these schools, will those school site codes be closed and a new site be open for McKinley? And will we lose the scores for Buchanan and stuff?
University Terrace will more than likely definitely be closed. The question will become, we'll have to, after you approve this, we'll have to dialogue with the Louisiana Department of Education. They will look at the composition of students, of where they come from, and they will advise us. I think our first primary request in speaking with the superintendent and staff will be for a new site code. Sometimes for accountability purposes, though, the department will come back, and it'll be a different one. We've had a couple scenarios before, like when Eden Park became Capital Elementary, or we've renamed some schools. If it's typically the whole body of students that gets absorbed, and it's the same students, then it's usually you keep the accountability code. In this case, because you are combining two, and depending on, once we do our state reporting and we show them exactly who's closed and where the kids are, we will request a new one, and then we'll dialogue with them.
And when you, just, because I'm not familiar with the process, when you request a new site code, do you get an SPS score the very first year? Okay.
Well, you get, for the elementary, you will. For like a high school, you'll get the portion of one of those indices that contribute. But for an elementary, you'll have the testing grades and whatnot.
Okay.
Well, I think of, or out of Estruma. Estruma didn't bring on the grad rate and the ACT till a couple of years. So, but for an elementary, yes, you will.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further comments from the Board? Seeing none, comments from the public. Okay. Now, comments from the Board. Okay. We will entertain a vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Item 3, Revised Budget. Consideration of a Request for Approval of the Revised 2022-2023 General Fund Budget for the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. Is there a motion? Okay. It has been moved by President Lanis. Is there a second? And it has been seconded by Mr. Goday. Comments from the Board. Ms. Kennison.
I have questions about the surplus. Where does it, where does it go? What's the, what fund? Like, who do I, who do I direct it? Kelly? My questions are, where does the surplus go? Into what fund? How much is in it now? How often and for what are we dipping into it? And when? I'll leave, let you answer those, and I have a few more.
Okay. So what happens is, if you have a surplus, it rolls into the general fund fund balance. Okay? And the fund balance is like your savings account. It's there in case you need it. We are projecting $109 million for this year will be our fund balance because we are increasing it by $16.7 million. That is inclusive of our assigned and our unassigned funds. So how do you get to it? For example, I always look at it as I need to make payroll. So a payroll for us is $24 million a month. So in my mind, that's four months' worth of payroll. So that's how I like to look at it. If something happened, COVID, flood, hurricane, we can pay our people for four months.
When's the last time we dipped into it?
2018, 19. We had a negative fund balance of $27 million.
And then?
And it dropped it to 43.
Okay. But we haven't dipped into it since then?
Not that I recall. I can check for you. No.
But it's, is it generally for one-time things? Or are we, are we?
No, not necessarily. I mean, if you have a bad year, if, you know, you can use it to dip in if you're having a bad year, and you, you know, you have goals of what you're going to do the next year, but you're just running a little bit of a deficit that year, you can still use it now. Is it a ding with LDOE? Yes. But you still have the fund balance to cover it. You can, if you have a fund balance, you can approve a budget with a negative, a negative, more expenditures than revenues, a negative balance, if you have the fund balance to cover it.[1507.00]
But it, just like in your personal accounting, it's not the best?
Well, no. The goal is always to balance the budget.
Right.
But with governmental accounting, you start over every year.
And then, I think my only other question is, we, this is the revised general fund budget, do we receive copies of the revised other funds?
You absolutely do. With special revenue, you'll get those next month. The revised for the special revenue and the proposed are done at the same time, along with the proposed general fund. So, you'll get a special revenue book.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ballou?
Thank you. I noticed what's on page 53, the, the ESL budget, or bilingual education budget. We had originally budgeted for 40 teachers, and the revised budget shows 13. I'm just, wanted an explanation on that.
Human Resources would be a much better person to probably answer that question, but we use the numbers for the February count, and those are the February count of the teachers. That is a very difficult slot to fill. And as you know, everyone in the country is having difficulty finding teachers, especially those who teach bilingual education. So, that is my best explanation for you. I'm sure Ms. Hall has a much better one.
All right. And she's not here?
No, sir.
Superintendent, do you have any comments on that? Or do you have any more insight?
No, I don't have any more insight, but we can get, we can check into that for you, Mr. Ballou.
All right, well, thank you.
Mr. Lanis?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ms. Lopez, quick question. Could you inform the board, what is the state's recommended threshold? That the number that we cannot go under inside of the fund budget?
So, it's seven and a half percent of your revenues versus your general, your fund balance. So, right now, we're at 20%. So, it all depends on what your revenues are, what your projected revenues are.
So, as long as we don't go below 7%?
Seven and a half percent is the sweet spot.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Martin?
I was just curious, is there going to be a presentation on this? Or, or this is, or this is it?
For the revised budget?
Yes.
No, this is it. The board workshop, we covered, but if there's, if you'd like us to review, we can do that again.
No, 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 the, I mean, I mean, obviously, it's a very dense document, a lot of, a lot of information there. And so, I was kind of thinking there was going to be like a PowerPoint synopsis here of the, the basic consequences or options that we have in looking at this.
No, the only preparation we did was what was presented at the board workshop.
The one today?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that, that workshop was for the revised budget.
Okay. I don't have any questions to this time.
Thank you. Seeing no other names in the queue, comments from the public? Okay, returning to the board. Comments from the board? Okay, we will entertain a vote. Please vote. The motion carries. Thank you. So, you all, as we enter item number four, I have not done my homework as a teacher, so, legal counsel, will you tell me how to pronounce that first word, please? Pulse Waiter, thank you. Pulse Waiter in Netterville Proposal Auditing Services. Consideration of a request for approval to accept the proposal from Pulse Waiter in Netterville to provide auditing services for the East Baton Rouge Paris School System for three years, with an additional two-year renewal option at the cost of $163,000 for 2023, $167,000 for 2024, and $171,000 for 2025. Is there a motion? Okay, moved by Mr. Ballou. Is there a second? Okay, and seconded by Ms. Stewart. All right, comments from the board. Mr. Goday?
Yes, thank you, Vice President Powell. This is a question for Mr. Shamblin. I know that Postal Wait has just been acquired by another company, and should we, how should we handle that? Should we postpone this to get the correct company in here? Or just do a assignment of the contract to the new company? How should this be handled?
We can handle that in the actual contract with the company. I believe today, you simply approve the option with the name in front of you, and we can handle, generally, assignments are handled within the actual contract itself. So, we can handle that on the backend.
Because I don't, I know it's been announced, but it hasn't been closed yet.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was all my own question.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions or comments from the board? Okay, comments from the public? Okay, returning to comments from the board? Ms. Kinnison?
Kelly? Feel free to just decline, but as our CFO?
Yes.
Your opinion on the matter?
Postal Wait? Oh, they're fabulous. I'm, I'm very excited.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay, we will now entertain a vote. Please vote. The motion carries. Thank you. Item five, resolution millage. Consideration of a request to adopt a resolution for the purpose of levying millages effective on the 2023 assessment roll as required by law by June 1st, 2023. Is there a motion? Okay, all right, it has been moved by Mr. Russ and seconded by Ms. Stewart. Comments from the board? Okay, all right, seeing no comments. Okay, and comments from the public? Ms. Matthews?
Good afternoon, evening. There we are, evening, yes. I do agree with this resolution. I just, since there have been some board members that have spoken about parts of the millages that go into this resolution, just want to make sure that everybody understands that those millages that were just renewed are in fact not our 8% raise as, which has been misrepresented to the public. Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? All right, seeing none, comments from the board. Mr. Goday?
Thank you, Vice President Powell. Just to be clear, Mr. Shamblin, if I'm correct, this is a renewal of property tax millages. The recent election we had was on sales taxes. So, it has absolutely nothing to do with this resolution, the recent election.
Ms. Lopez will come up and respond to that.
Okay. We can get your exercise today, Ms. Lopez.
Okay, so, the, the, the election was for the renewal of four tax, property tax millages.
Property taxes, okay, I was wrong, okay.
Two 23 and two 24. This motion puts us on the tax rolls. It does not increase anyone's taxes. It simply allows the assessor to pay us every month.
Thank you for correcting me. Thank you.
Thank you. President Lanis?
Now, I was going to say, thank you, Ms. Lopez. That's actually what I was going to just come back and say. And just off one of the comments that we did here, I think the district has done a fabulous job clarifying and correcting that when we passed the four propositions, it was to give us the basis to get to raising the 8% as we dialogue and go through our general fund. We talk about this all the time, both myself, Vice President Powell, and the rest of the staff who went inside our board leadership meeting. So, I just want the public to know that we are digging through our budget diligently, and we are committed to making sure we get to that 8% so that we can take care of our teachers, not just teachers, but our entire staff by raising the pay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, we will now entertain a vote. Please vote. The motion carries. Thank you. Item six, oversight. Consideration of a request for the approval of Tax Plan Proposition 1 Budget Supplement Recommendation, which was approved by the Tax Plan Oversight Committee on May 1st, 2023. Is there a motion? Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Lanis and seconded by Mr. Russ. Comments from the board? Mr. Martin?
Could I ask someone just to, for benefit of those of us who are very new, and for the public, to explain exactly what the Oversight Committee is, what its role in the process is, and what our role in adopting these recommendations is?
I'll provide a brief overview, Mr. Martin. So, the Oversight Committee is a component of the tenure tax plan passed by this board and adopted by this board and passed by the voters of the district in 2018, I believe, hold me to that date. The Oversight Committee's purpose is to assure that the funds that are collected are properly used. And so, it's a safeguard, sort of a safeguard, no other better term than oversight body. And anytime there's a change sought to the plan, whether it be for propositions 1, 2, or 3, a request has to go to the Oversight either first, and then come to this board for final approval, or this board, it could, it could originate with our board and then go to the Oversight for final approval. It's a secondary body to make sure that the tax plans, goals, and objectives are being met, the funds are being handled correctly, and that any changes are truly required and needed to maintain that purpose.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. A couple of follow-up questions. Who, who is on the Oversight Committee? And how are they selected? Are they appointed by us, or by the superintendent, or by some anonymous group of taxpayers, or what?
Yeah, they're not appointed by the superintendent. Actually, the specifics for the membership of the Oversight Committee are in the tax plan itself. I don't have those in front of me, so I apologize, I can get that for you. But there are a number of individuals from different seats, including LSU Southern, I believe, the sheriff's office is represented as, as a tax collector, the clerk's office, and I know that CSRS is here, they can probably give a little more detail there. But that body is, the specifics of that body are laid out in the tax plan. And, and so, I could provide that to this board that's also available to the public by request.
Thank you. And then, I think, hopefully, my final question is, is this particular budget, did it just, how did it originate and how does it flow? So, did it originate from the superintendent, go to Oversight Committee for approval, and then come to us? Or have we previously voted on, on this as a board and it's gone to them, and now it's come back to us, or what?
Yeah, so, this, this budget arises from the tax plan. So, each one of these projects, each one of the, in this case, construction projects has a budget pre-approved. And that's laid out by the tax plan itself. There's a specific amount dedicated to each project. Should there be a need to look at the budget itself? If there's inflationary costs or emergency reasons, et cetera, that's when we go to the Oversight for a request. In this case, I believe it's connected, it's related to inflation, basically to the cost of, of supply, demand, et cetera, driving the cost of these projects up. And so, essentially, this began with CSRS, our project manager. They came to us with basically an alert that we need to look at several projects. They met with staff, they met with me, and then took the proposal to the Oversight first for consideration. Oversight approved that on Monday night, and now we're here with you for a final approval of that recommendation.
But surely, it's not purely just a straightforward application of the, the tax plan. I mean, there is discretion that's involved in, in the scope of particular projects. There may be money devoted to a particular school, and then the superintendent and our, and the board have to decide, do we want that school to serve 200 students, or 400 students, or 800 students? I mean, there's some level of discretion in there, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And so, I think that's, that's, that's the nature of my questions, is, you know, we're, we're being presented with this for the first time, you know, I think, tonight, obviously, you know, got the materials a few days ago, and I want to understand what, what decisions we really are, are making, and maybe have been made, you know, before, before our involvement or discussion is being presented to us as, oh, the Oversight Committee said this, and we need to ratify that. But it's really our discretion initially is to, to, not, we can't change the scope of the tax plan, but to those discretionary decisions that go into this, that's really our, our decision ultimately, correct?
That's correct. And our program manager can actually provide, if needed, details on these specific requests, if you'd like that.
I, I personally, Madam Vice President, would appreciate if we could have a presentation on exactly what these projects are, some general summary.
I'm not sure if, are you prepared to give a presentation tonight? Okay, okay. So, with that in mind, please, thank you so much, Ms. Anderson. If I could take a point of personal privilege, I just, I just have a question. So, was the Oversight Committee meeting open to the public on Monday? Okay.
Yes, ma'am, that meeting is noticed to the public. It is a public meeting, public body, and anyone from the public can attend and ask questions.
And the same with, with board members also?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Yes, ma'am, you're welcome. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Board President Lanis, Vice President Powell, Superintendent and Board. I'm Judith Anderson with CSRS Tillich, and today's presentation is to cover current market conditions and how they are affecting our tax plan projects. The construction industry for the past few years has really been in flux. Those rising costs are due to COVID, supply, demand, labor shortages, kind of you name it at this point, the war on Ukraine with fuel costs. All of those has contributed to a good deal of flux within the tax plan. Locally, we've seen an increase of 30 to 40% for a lot of our construction projects, not specifically to EBR, but in general for our, for the greater Baton Rouge area. Currently, we are seeing that the market is stabilizing, and we are seeing some normality, but there are still some challenges. And so, as we see stabilization, we have three active projects that are within design and planning that we'll be bidding soon, that we fear, not fear, that we think will still be affected by these increasing costs. The normal year-to-year that we anticipate is a 2% to 4%. So, whereas we've seen in these past few years, we're up to that 30 to 40%, we want to be proactive and make sure that we get in front of any issues for our projects here to come. On top of that, the state has also adopted a new energy code. So, with that, you will see great benefits in the operational aspect of things on the backside. However, with anything new, there is some cost impact to that as well. And where things are right now, outside of that 2% to 4%, there's no way that anyone could have really predicted where we would have been. So, kind of going into phase four, this, this phase pretty much covers eight new schools, 14 classroom additions and renovations, six demolitions, three facility modifications, and our HVAC maintenance services. Where we stand in phase four? And this is for the first five years. To date, all of our new schools within the first five years are active. So, whether it be in construction and closing out, in design or programming, those are all active. Our additions and renovations, four of the nine are complete. We have one that just bid, one in construction, one on hold, and then there are two upcoming major, there's one upcoming major renovation and a classroom addition. Our facility modification projects are all complete, and HVAC continues throughout. Just to give some historical project cost data, back in 2017, when we did Broadmoor Elementary School, we were pretty much at $208 a square foot. Today, we are seeing costs as high as $337 a square foot. And so, this is just kind of a list of our EBR projects that have been bidding since 2017 to date. Our uncommitted budget and contingency. So, as part of the tax plan budget for those construction projects, we have two line items, again, one uncommitted, where that is rollover funds of a project, may have had some remaining funds that was not used after the project was complete, it rolls over. There's also just revenues, where it may not have been assigned, but the revenue was up, and so, all of that is consolidated into an uncommitted budget. And so, typically, what happens with that uncommitted budget is, it just rolls over over the years, and toward the end, we start creating projects from that budget. And then, there's contingency. So, there's always that safety net within that, that the tax plan accounts for. Currently, we are at $22,650,476 for our uncommitted, and in contingency, we have Specifically, Brown Fields Elementary is kind of the basis. This is the first active new school that we have, where we have gotten, I guess it would be a solid cost estimate. And it is still an estimate because we are still in design. However, it gave us some projections of where we think that project will come in once we get solid bids. And so, the overall budget for that project was $25,177,000. The construction budget was $19,650,000. And the estimated cost right now for that design is $21,934,774. And so, with that, what we have done is met with the district and all of the departments where, well, I'll back up a little bit. We have pretty much a design standard. So, it says every elementary school, or the elementary school will have this number of classrooms at this size, a cafeteria, dining, multipurpose, so on and so forth. So, we took that document as our starting base, and then with the district, we went in and saw where there may have been spaces we could do without. And so, we cut back on some of the square footage. We also just looked at, with our construction manager at risk and architect, various materials, construction, construction types, and so, we vetted those to see where we could cut any cost. And so, through those exercises, at the end, we came to the current bid of the $21 million. And so, with that, that brings us over where we would request $3,850,000 for that project. So, our proposed request? It's basically a request, $14,650,000. That would be for our next three projects, Brown Fields Elementary, that I just spoke of, the New Elementary School in the south, where this is a new elementary school that would be located off of Perkins Road, we're in the midst of closing on that property, and the closing date for that should be May 17th, and then Baton Rouge Center for Visual and Performing Arts. So, individually, each one of those budgets would be, it would be a 15% increase on Brown Fields, in that that is still a smaller school. Baton Rouge Center for Visual and Performing Arts, that would be a 22% increase, and the New Elementary School would be an 18% increase. Any questions?
Will we come back to Mr. Martin? Because I, okay, all right. Mr. Martin?
Thank you. For, for, for the various projects, I understand, Ms. Anderson, that, that, that a great deal of this, these cost increases are due to inflation and, you know, similar kind of, just, basically, it's more cost per square foot. And, and any of these projects are the cost increases because at some point, a decision has been made to increase the scope of a project and add more, you know, square footage to a particular school, or something like that?
It, it could be, yes. So, in these cases, so, I guess Baton Rouge Center for Visual and Performing Arts, that would, that would increase one class- would increase one classroom per grade level. So I guess technically, that would be an increase. But what we've done there to help accommodate that increase is, again, cut back on other spaces. So a lot of our schools now have collaboration spaces. BRCVPA would still have collaboration spaces, however, the concept or how we're looking at it is, they are performing arts spaces for dance, drama, and so on. That will become their collaboration. So they wouldn't have additional collaboration spaces on top of that, which should help accommodate the increase in classroom numbers.
Okay. I guess my question for the superintendent is, and I don't have a problem with any of that, but I just want to understand, you know, what is the appropriate role of the board in deciding to, for example, increase the square footage at BRCVPA in that example? Is that something that we generally set a policy for? Is this how big we want a particular school? Is that something, we just say, we want a school here and leave that to you and the staff to decide?
I'd ask General Counsel, I'm not aware of the board taking a position on policy for architectural design.
My question is not about the architectural design. It's about, do we have a school intended to serve 200 people or 400 people, for example? Or, you know, that's got nothing to do with architectural design. It's a scoping, programming exercise.
So, no, we're not, I'm not aware of the board taking a position on that. What we usually do is we meet with the CSRS and the Architectural Design Team to look at, you know, what are the numbers? There's a whole process they go through and look at, what is the number of students, capacity, what are the learning spaces they have, those things. So in terms of the board, I am not aware of a board policy that addresses that. General Counsel?
Not a board policy, but Dr. Nocese is correct. And I see Ms. Anderson also agreeing. Generally, a program manager will meet with the superintendent and staff around particular projects. There's a budget to the mount, and the attempt, the goal is to stay within that budget, and they discuss the maximum what they can do with that money in terms of space, classrooms, et cetera.
So it's not so much a decision about what size of school that we want at this location? It's about, how big a school can we build with this amount of money?
Yes, that's correct. And the board votes on grade configuration and programmatic pieces. That's where the board's role is in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kennison?
Mr. Martin asked pretty much all of my questions. Use these couple of moments to see if I have any more. So it's the board's responsibility when, only in this case? Like when the, or? I guess I'm wondering, like, for instance, the new school that we're, the property that we're purchasing, is that something that the board approves, has approved?
So the project was approved in the tax plan via this board. The board approved a tax plan that included the purchase of those properties and the building of schools, right? And so that's been pre-approved by the board and also approved by the voters. After the project was approved, tax plan comes forward. We have a program manager. There still have to be decisions around programming, potentially grade-level configurations. You can shift some of those as long as you stay within budget. But all of those things also have to be decided by the board, and that comes later. Okay? And so the board does make decisions around programming based on recommendations from the superintendent. Grade-level configurations also based on those recommendations, which are usually based on need. You know, we look at what we need in a particular area, et cetera. That could shift from the original tax plan. Once we stay generally within the budget, we're fine. But when we go outside the budget, we go to the oversight for approval, because that's also required.
Okay. So then, and pardon me for taking up time, being naive on the matter, so the tax plan is very specific, like?
Yes, yes. They're named projects in the tax plan, a number of them.
Okay. And then the Oversight Committee, they have the main authority on this?
Yeah, anytime there are changes or needs to change a given project that changes budgetary allotment, the Oversight Committee comes into play.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, President Lanis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. How you doing, Ms. Judith? You know, you're one of my favorites. One thing that I want to talk about, I think, because I think School Board Member Martin brought up an excellent point, because we don't have, or have not adopted a policy that specifies what we want our scopes to be, I think that is something that we should look at. And this is the reason why I say that. Last year sometime, we took a trip to Miami-Dade County, and we saw the scope of work of what they were doing. And literally, they had eco-friendly schools, and they were, they housed up to anywhere from 800 to 1,200 students, which is typically about the same size as our schools, but they're spending less dollars. And the way that they're doing it is because they're using eco-friendly modeling and modifications in order to do so. Not to say that we aren't doing that, but I think that because we don't have a standard, I think it gives us room to create spaces where we are spending more money than we really have to. And maybe I'm wrong about that, but this is the idea that I came up with. Let's say you have $200 million that you have allocated in the tax plan. Under the current model that we're using, we're building schools at a tune of almost, what, average $25 million, $30 million? So you're only able to build about eight schools. But if you had an industry standard, that you build in more eco-friendly schools, you can build about 11 schools, meaning that you get about three more schools out of that. And I think that other places are doing that, and I just want to see us get to a similar place where we can also do that, if that makes any sense. So maybe that is a policy that we bring back, School Board Member Martin, where we can dialogue and look at that, so that we can build not only more schools, but we're also making it more eco-friendly for our entire community. Thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you. Mr. Godey?
Yes, thank you. Just, I'm gonna play General Counsel here, just for a quick second. Just for some background, particularly for the new board members and the public. The Oversight Committee is technically the EFID, Educational, EFID stands for Educational Funding Independent District, or Financial Independent District. So the actual collector of the tax is not the school board. The actual collector of the tax is that district. And the, I looked up, it's on, you can easily get it on our website and stuff. But the composition of that Oversight Committee is three finance or accounting professionals, one a faculty member by LSU, a faculty member by Southern University, and then a CPA employed in the private sector, recommended by the Baton Rouge Chapter of the Society of Louisiana Certified Public Accountants. And then those three people nominate two other people to serve on that board. So that board is independent, really, of the school board. It is, but they are the ones who actually, they are the ones who actually collect the money and work with the money in that. We technically, as a school board, only recommend to them how to spend the money, if I got that correct, Mr. Shamblin.
Yeah, and that's correct. The FID, actually, just for clarification, is the Educational Facilities Improvement District. So it's a separate taxing district, I believe, it's set up statutorily.
It is set up statutorily. It is its own entity, and it's not the school board. But those are the five members of that Oversight Committee who really are independent of the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
I hope my comments are germane to the topic, okay? Darris, that's a kind of inside joke between Darris and I. Mr. Shamblin, when this tax plan was approved, what was roughly the number of students attending schools in EBR? Can anybody tell me?
That would have been 2018. I'd have to research that.
Okay.
I don't want to say the wrong answer.
Yeah, I mean, because.
When it first started?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is Phase Four, so there have been four phases. I believe 10 years apiece. I'm not sure about the first phase. The first phase might have been five years.
So I guess to get to the point I'm wanting to make, when these schools were, decided to build these schools, I'm sure we had a lot more kids in EBR schools at the time than, but now we're building schools based on old numbers. And I understand definitely what you're saying, President Lanis, about eco-friendly schools. But we're building schools to house kids that we don't even have in our schools. And I've asked Mr. Shamblin this before, can we not build, we have to build the schools because they're in the tax plan, correct?
Yeah, so the tax plan is approved by the voters. To deviate from that significantly would require a vote of the voters, if you're gonna really change the plans significantly. So to give you a little history, first of all, the plan was renewed in 2018, right? And so that's five years ago, six years ago, I lose track, but five, thank you. So 10 years ago. At that time, the process, in summary, we basically conducted a number of community meetings across the district. I want to say six to eight across the district.
Took part in some of those meetings.
And we actually gauged the community interest in not just the types of projects they wanted, but the ordering of those projects. Which ones would be to be built first, second, third, fourth, et cetera, over that 10-year period. We also gauged information around size, what would be needed for a particular community. And there was also some discussion around the types of schools in terms of programming, but primarily, the projects are listed in that way in terms of what the community at that time wanted, expected, and we got a consensus. And so that document is really a consensus of the community as we saw it in 2018.
Okay. But 10 years ago.
Five years ago, yes.
But the tax plan, we're in Phase Four, and it's like there's 10 years between phases.
It's a 10-year plan, so 2018, 2019 is a start date, 2029 is the end date.
Okay. And I understand, I'm just saying, I think we've got to do business. We can't do business like we're a district with 60,000, 70,000, 80,000 kids, and we're not. So I think we need to be smarter with, you know, how we do things, how we build schools. And I know I can't do anything about that, but I just think, you know, we're, we are not that school district anymore. So if we're gonna have two or three brand-new schools, and they're not near capacity, that we spend the taxpayers' money wisely. I mean, that's, this is, you know, because we've got schools now, brand-new schools that aren't at capacity. And to pivot away from that, Ms. Anderson, in these new schools that we're building, are we putting things in place like safety, like safety glass, bulletproof glass? What about access? Because, you know, with what's happening in our schools now, we've got to build these schools with safety in mind. How can we, because the schools that I pass every day, most of those campuses are wide open. So if we're building new schools, we can't build new schools that are wide open. We've got to take into account just the culture that we live in when we construct these schools.
Yes, we are looking at that. So it's not to the extent of bulletproof glass. We are doing, well, just since you mentioned that, we are not going to that extent, but there are secured vestibules that we look at. We are beginning to have, this new school in the South will be a partnership with Brick. And so because that is a park with the public, a private, we're looking at consultants, security consultants to kind of review. And so we are going through, I guess, more thorough reviews and seeing what more we can do to provide more safety measures. But there's access control at doors. So just different measures of first entry point where it's a secured vestibule. And then if you go through another, another portion of the building where there may be automatic shutdowns, should someone get past the secured vestibule, where it's automatic closures at doors. So there are things, looking at the amount of glass versus wall. So there are a lot of measures, yes, that we have been looking at.
And those things can be factored in. I hope those things wouldn't be add-ons.
Correct. Within the initial design, as a part of the design concept.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I have entered into the queue as well, and I believe that my question may be more for you, Mr. Shamblin. So I know that we have, we have documents, supporting documents that have assisted in vetting this item. But when we think about what it is that we're voting on, can you give us, for the sake of the public, layman's terms, what are we voting on for Item Six?
Excuse me. So you're voting to approve an amendment to the current budget of those tax projects identified by Ms. Anderson, to allow us to pull money from the surplus in the tax plan, to make sure we meet the full budgetary needs of those projects?
Thank you. Mr. Russ?
Good question for Gwen. Just because we're in, we're knee-deep in this discussion. Does the Oversight Committee have the power, or is it within their power, to change any scope of the tax plan? Not the board. But if the Oversight Committee puts their heads together and said, we're changing this project, or we're throwing this project out, or we're gonna add this project, is that within their power to do so?
No, sir. The Oversight Committee considers recommendations from the program manager and staff based upon needs, and then they vote to either approve or not those recommendations. They don't generate those recommendations. Does that help?
A bit. If it was recommended from the district to change the scope of a project, remove a project, add a project, make any change to the tax plan as exists as a document, is that within their power?
Only if they meet certain, well, first of all, any recommendations to alter, to amend or change the budget to a project, there are conditions built into the tax plan. Emergencies, unforeseen events, variations in estimates, right? In this case, Ms. Anderson is bringing us variations and estimates based upon inflation. I think I am answering your question there, right?
Yep.
So those are the three conditions. So it's not just, the request has to meet a condition. It can't just simply be, I want to change the project.
Can't just pull it out of thin air and say, no, I don't like this plan. Right? They're pretty well tied to what the taxpayers adopted as that document.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, board comments in the queue, we will now have comments from the public. Okay. None from the public. Moving back to the board, Mr. Lewis.
I'd like to, I saw Mr. Smith walk in. I've got some questions or concerns about the fair share. I don't know if this is, if this is the right place to ask that question? Maybe it's not, okay. But we're talking about spending a lot of money on schools, and I'd just like to know what the DBE participation is in these plans. Is that, okay? That's germane to the topic. Mr. Smith, would you mind? I know that's your wheelhouse. Maybe Ms. Anderson might want to come back with you. I didn't, John, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to throw you on the spot, but I didn't want to miss the opportunity to put this out there, because I know the fair share is something that's really important.
No, actually, it's very time that we met earlier today and kind of looked over where we are on the projects that we have out there. There were about nine projects. Percent participation is ranging anywhere from around 27, 30%, down in some cases to, you know, to 3%. There are about two different components to looking at that. It's both on the design side as well as on the, on the construction side. We just recently put together some process about which we could put persons in the room with the major contractors to ensure that they are connected, and we can provide you with kind of the results of some of the things that's been going on. But that's kind of where we are right now.
And for those of you who don't know about the Fair Share Program, those are disadvantaged businesses by minorities, women, other people who pay taxes.
Correct. It's a sign of women minority-owned businesses here in the community. I choose not to call them disadvantaged, but businesses that do quality work that just happen to be women and minority-owned. And that's what we strive to identify, companies that can do the quality work. The other thing that we're looking at is how do we help them be able to do that work? So again, like I say, we met earlier today.
And I didn't know that. And I didn't know that. But discerning spirits, I guess.
Yes. Met earlier today just to look at where we are. We also are trying to meet with other departments within the, within the EBR to see how can we help them. It's not just about construction, it's about everything that we do. So we're committed to looking at how do we help companies grow their capacity? How do we make sure that the voters, we talked a lot about the voters, that the citizens keep the confidence in us, that we're really helping the community to be able to, to help their children help themselves?
Now, that 22 million, Ms. Anderson, what's the total percentage?
Well, so, we can pool, but there are some measures in place. For every project, we do pool that participation and what those percentages are. So we have reports for each project that we can turn over and show what that participation is.
And what's the, what's the back? I'm sorry.
The goal is to, at least 20%.
At least 20%. And how does that line up with the city and BRIC and other major people who build major products, projects, I'm sorry?
I don't know that. That's some information I can get for you. But I do, I will say this, that what we do is a program that's different from anybody else's program. We look at where the opportunities are and then try to connect the companies with the opportunities. We're not just interested in having a list of a whole bunch of people. We're looking at having companies that do the quality work and can take advantage of the opportunities that we may be here. But I will see what the city has as a goal or has as a program, and also what BRIC has. I think they're similar to what we have. We mirrored most of what we do from them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lanis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I will take a phrase out of School Board Member Russ's playbook, where he said, "We are knee-deep into this conversation." But this is a really good dialogue, I will say that. And I would motion to the Board that I think we should strongly consider something that General Counsel brought up. It's possibly, and I've heard you say this several times before, School Board Member Gode, is that for a lot of our board members, well, now, all of our board members, we were not here when the tax plan was originally passed and approved. So a lot of these projects that you're seeing, we didn't have any voice in it. And I'd say that, I come back to General Counsel and say, "I think the good idea is possibly going back to voters and saying, 'Let's make modifications to the tax plan.'" Now, I'm not saying that we change the order, I'm not saying that we change the schools that are being built, but I do think that we can peel back some of the layers so that we can handle other projects that are pertinent right now inside of our districts. I'll give you one. In School Board Member Nathan Russ's district, I visited one of our highest-performance schools in our entire district. And this is not, by the way, to make it look like the district isn't doing its job, because it is. But this is just a problem that came up, but it just wasn't advocated when the tax plan was approved. But in this district, we went to Shenandoah Elementary School, and as we went through the school, this is an A-rated school, students learning phenomenally, amazing staff, amazing board member, by the way, too. But seriously, as we go through the school, the school is so old that it needs immediate repairs. Now, the problem is, the tax plan is already approved and passed, and you have to wait 10 years before you can roll this school back into that plan. Well, we don't have that kind of time. As we went inside of some of the school, buildings, went inside of T-b buildings. Some of those T-b buildings, the floors were almost falling in, the AC units are going out, because those are temporary buildings. And I understand that it's a growing school, but I think that we have, we have a position that we can take on this that could give us the ability to not only fix those types of projects, but fix other projects in other people's districts also. Because I knew in several of our districts, there are some immediate needs that we need and concerns we have to do now, but we can't just go into general fund and pull those dollars out. We can't just go and pull out capital improvement funding, because we're going to run out of money. So I just, I bring that up to say that's something that we should strongly consider is going back to taxpayers and asking them, "Can we make modifications to the tax plan so that we can get some of those immediate needs taken care of?" Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kennison.
Everybody's bringing up some really good points. And what Mr. Lewis was talking about with, you know, things have changed, this is a lot of money we're talking about, there's other, like, are we, are we building this for students that aren't coming? Mr. Russ, really good points about are there, are, is there room for changing the scope of the projects without us really knowing or understanding? I think we need to be educated more on, on, on the tax plan and what, what we can do to steer the, the construction and all in ways that make sense. So I'd like to make a substitute motion to send without recommendation and encourage us all to educate ourselves on, more on what's happening and encourage others to reach out to us, help us understand more about this, this item. Thank you.
Okay, so it has been moved by Ms. Kennison to send this particular item, item six, on the Oversight, or with the topic of Oversight, to the full board with our recommendation. Is there a second? Okay, it has been seconded by Ms. Stewart, and we will now engage in public comment in regards to the substitute motion. Mr. Martin, would you still like to speak?
I would, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, Mr. Martin.
Because I'm still just trying to get clarity, and before I decide whether to vote for the substitute motion, I want to get a little more clarity on our role in all of this. Because while the EFID is in charge of kind of controlling the funding, right, and that's why we need their permission, these projects are actually projects of the School Board, correct? And so CSRS Tillage, and I want to compliment Ms. Anderson for the phenomenal work she's obviously been doing for us, they work for us, correct? They don't work for the EFID.
That's correct.
And so, and, and so then, beyond that, Mr. Shamblin, can you help me understand a little bit more, and I hate to put you on the spot, hate to put you on the spot, but, but a little more like what discretion exists within the tax plan to, to, to kind of shift surplus money around? Obviously, it surely doesn't, you know, it's not given as rebates if you don't spend every dime. You can move it around to some extent. So for, for example, if we had, we have funds available that we decided to expand BRCVPA by adding an additional classroom per grade, I think is what you said, Superintendent. Is that, if, if, if the Board chose, does the Board or the EFID have the legal authority to say, "No, we don't want to spend that money to expand the capacity of BRCVPA, there's a greater need at the new school in the South, you know, part of whatever"? Help me understand what discretion we have in there.
So the, the Board certainly has that discretion. If, if there's, if there's a determination that the funding might be served better at a different location, like, and I'm going to make sure I hear your question right, potentially shifting funding from one project to the other, right? Then the Board would vote to send that recommendation to Oversight for final approval, okay? And, and so, and I'm assuming, and the reason I'm saying that, Mr. Martin, is because the, the tax plan has been approved already, and it's been ordered and set by the people and the Board, if we shift something significant like that, it would require this Board to vote and then the Oversight to approve.
But I guess my question is, does the tax plan say 10% of this money must be used at BRV, BRCVPA? I mean, that's my question, is, is, is if you wind up having a surplus available in one particular area, is that considered a major change in the tax plan or, or what?
Yeah, and I'll let our program manager speak to that. So in cases where, over time, we develop a surplus, then we can come to the Board and talk about additional projects and how we might use that money to address needs in the district, such as the one that Mr. Lanis identified at Shenandoah. So there are those options when there are additional funds available.
So I guess, but I guess, to hone in on exactly my question, the, the, I know the tax plan says that this will fund a new school in South Baton Rouge, and this will fund a replacement school at, at BRCVPA site, right? I mean, but does it say how much of the tax plan has to be used? I mean, does it say some percentage?
There's actually a dollar amount identified in the tax plan. I'm sorry, Ms. Martin. Yes, there's actually a dollar amount identified for each project in the tax plan.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I, I don't think any more detail from Ms. Anderson, sorry to make you get up, but I, I think that, that's, that's, that's helpful clarification. You know, I guess one of my concerns is that we, you know, there is discretion involved in these decisions, right? And that discretion is ours, it's not the EFIDs. I mean, you know, discretion on, on, on these decisions is ultimately here. CSRS Tillage works for us, not for EFID. And so I'm a little concerned that, that, you know, it's kind of being presented to us as if we're ratifying the Oversight District, but it's really our decision to make in the first place, and so should perhaps come to us before it goes to, to the Oversight Committee. That's, that's my concern. So I think I, I, I would like, I think I support the substitute motion, because I would like just a little more time to, to understand all, all of this.
I do want to say this, if you don't mind, and thank you, Mr. Martin. The tax plan, if you read it carefully, doesn't, it doesn't designate which body has to be, which body's approval must be sought first. It can be one way or the other. I do want to specify, and I want to make sure the Board understands, that there are time, that these items are time-sensitive. Even though sending without recommendation won't, won't delay us any further, we have work to try, try to stay on time with the tax plan. So, you know, any delay of this beyond this month delays the project itself.
I understand that. No, I understand that, and I'm, I appreciate Ms. Kennison's substitute motion being limited just to give us those, those two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gode.
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. I just wanted to give a little bit of historical context. Astroma High is a great example. Astroma High was not part of the Phase Three tax plan, but during the projects of the Phase Three, and, and the term that's used in the tax plan is named, named projects, there was some extra money left over, and that money was rerouted with approval of the Oversight Board to redo Astroma High School. So that was an example of extra money. But that was extra money after it was spent on the named projects. So there is an entire list, year by year, of named projects that was the result of a lot of negotiations, a lot of community input, a lot of community meetings going into that. And I think the only thing that we're off-track on that whole thing was the rebuilding or repurposing of Broadmoor Middle, and that has been put on hold because we don't exactly know what we want to do. I think we know what we want to do now, but the money that's in that named project isn't enough to do what we want to do now, so people are working through that. So I just, you know, the thought of going in and trying to change everything is, you're going to upset a lot of people. And in regards to spending the money wisely, if you just saw, we just passed a new McKinley High, that shuts down UT and Buchanan and combines that into one school. If you look at the new Brownsfield, what we just talked about, which I attended the community meeting over there, where they sat and went through the teachers and the parents, how the new building would look with all the safety features, and all the things that they're designing in, it was a great meeting. But that school shuts down White Hills and combines White Hills and Buchanan. Some of the, I mean, White Hills and Brownsfield. Some of the other schools that are in there rebuilding, and I've been, I used to live right around the corner from Shenandoah, but I got to tell you, Glasgow's just as, Glasgow's just as in bad shape, if not worse, much worse than that. That school is meant to be rebuilt. Mayfair is, is part of the thing to be rebuilt. Great enhancement of McKinley High School is part of that, to be rebuilt. The purchase of the land and the new high school and new elementary school in the underserved area of the southeastern part of the parish is part of things to be rebuilt. So I, I don't want anyone to go away with the impression that we're doing things with schools that are underutilized or underdone. Mayfair has a waiting list. Glasgow is fully at capacity, as far, as much as I remember. Like I said, we're combining school as we go through. So this, this is not something that was done without forethought about going into that. It's addressing a lot of the issues where we were underserved with old schools. And quite honestly, a lot of the area that got the first parts of the tax plan were the original schools, more in the northern part of the parish, because those were the older schools, and they needed it first. But this tax, Phase Four is mainly, if you look at it, more in the southern part of the parish, where the schools weren't quite as old, but there's a great need. If you look at the demographics, that's where the parish has grown, that's where we need schools. And it's not doing everything. Highland Elementary is not being touched. Wildwood's not being touched. Magnolia Woods is not being touched in any, any way, shape, or form of, of any significance. So I don't want people to think that that plan was put together and we're just going ahead and spending a lot of money and wasting money on the schools. There was a lot of thought put into how that got put together, and I think that money is being spent pretty wisely. And I think you guys need to really, we really need to have a workshop or something to go through that, so all of you can understand that and understand what are the things behind it. Because I guarantee you, start moving some of that around, and you're going to fill up this room with people from Mayfair and Glasgow out here saying, "Why are you, why are you moving my school?" I got, I took a lot of flak, because particularly Glasgow, I think, was in year eight, and everyone was hitting me up, "Well, why do we have to wait till year eight?" And I go, "Well, we got to spread the money." Because those projects are named per year in response to, it's a pay-as-you-go plan. So we're not doing and breaking ground on anything till we've gotten the money in to go ahead and do it. So that's why it's spread out, for that way. We're not going for bond issues, we're not doing things on anything like that. We collect the money, we build the building. So I just don't want anyone to go think that there was not a lot of forethought put into how those things were put together, okay? And, and as far, I, I really do think the, the timing is important. I don't know, I could vote for the substitute motion or not, because all someone has to do is pull it anyway at the regular meeting, so I don't know how much it really does to have a substitute motion to, to refer it without review, or refer it without recommendation, because anyone can pull it. So I haven't decided how I'm going to vote yet on that, to be honest with you, but I think we have a solid plan, and yeah, there are a few little nicks and pushes that you might want to do around it, but trying to go ahead and make any wholesale changes in that plan is fraught. And it might jeopard, you know, it wasn't the easiest tax plan to pass this time, and if you change with the voters, I'm sorry, I'm over time, if you change with the voters' pass, you're going to make it very difficult the next time around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gode. Okay, I have entered the queue. I believe that Ms. Anderson has something additional to share.
I think it just kind of goes with what Mr. Gode and Mr. Shamblin was saying. For each project, we still do go and sit down, look at the current enrollment, so it's not cookie-cutter, per se, of what may have been. So if adjustments were made with enrollment, those current counts are accounted for. And like I say, for Brownfields even, where they, where a standard for another school may have been used as the base, we still did some evaluation in what that school may not have needed because of, whether it's the enrollment capacity or programming, those things were eliminated. So there is some vetting per school in, when it goes to the amount of money that's spent for each school. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear as well.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments from the Board, we are still in the conversation of the substitute motion to send the item without recommendation. So are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to comments from the Board. Mr. Lanis.
Sorry, Madam Vice President. I promise I'll be real quick. I just want to specify something, because I think Mr. Gode brought up some excellent points. But I think what I was saying, just for clarification points, is I wasn't saying if you go back to the voters that we change the scope of any of the work. I was saying that you can shave some of the, the dollar amount back. So let's say for every project that's over $25 million, you shave back a million. That doesn't change the scope of the work, won't change when that project goes in, but what it does do is, now if it was smaller projects in other districts, we can get that done, such as the fencing, we talked about safety. To me, I feel as though that's an emergency, something that nobody thought about in 1998, nobody thought about, what, five years ago, but it's something that we have to think about now, and it gives us the ability to do it quicker, and also without going inside of our general fund. And the, the best part is, the Board doesn't make the decision. We go right back to the voters, the same people who voted for it, and if they don't want to do it, they vote it down. If they want us to do it, and they, they think it's a good plan, they'll vote it up, and we can make the changes. But I just wanted to clarify that, that's all.
Thank you. Were there any other comments from the Board? Seeing none, we will entertain a vote, and this is for the substitute motion to send item six without recommendation to the full Board agenda. Please vote.
Please vote.
The motion carries. Thank you. Moving to Item 7, naming of the J.K. Haynes Site, consideration of a request to accept the committee recommendation for the naming of the new school to be located at J.K. Haynes Site. All right, is there a presentation or anything? Okay, all right. We will entertain, is there a motion? Is there a motion for Item 7?
So we need a motion to adopt the recommendation to accept the name that's been recommended by the superintendent?
Okay.
Mr. Brickhouse, can you share the name that the committee?
The name that was selected was the J.K. Haynes Teacher Prep and Leadership Academy.
All right, so are you keeping your motion on the floor? Okay, so thank you so much, Mr. Brickhouse. It has been moved by Ms. Stewart. Is there a second? Okay, it has been seconded by Mr. Lewis. Comments from the board, and I've entered into the queue. I just wanted to share, first of all, I had the opportunity to somewhat participate in the naming process, of which I was quite appreciative. And again, as we've talked about before, Mr. Haynes was very instrumental in our community, and I'm thankful that we're able to, number one, honor his legacy, but then also, I am super excited once again about having a teacher's school in the district, and the idea of attaching leadership to the name of the school allows us to be able to even expand our horizons in regards to creating leaders throughout our schools and bringing them up to par and being able to lead possibly even in sessions or segments like where we are here in this arena. So I just wanted to say, number one, I applaud the work of those who participated in the naming process, and I look forward to us being able to assist this school in growing to greater heights. Mr. Lewis.
Kudos to Vice President Powell. The opportunity that we have at J.K. Haynes is tremendous in terms of moving this district forward. I mean, I just think it's a wonderful opportunity. Mr. Godey sent me an article last week about a school in another state doing something very similar, where there was a young high school student who wanted to be a teacher, who was getting exposed to the profession at a school much like what we're doing at J.K. Haynes. So I just think it's a wonderful opportunity for this district, a wonderful opportunity to grow our own teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments in the queue, we will now turn to the public for comments. Ms. Corley.
Good afternoon. Coranda Corley, parent disabilities advocate nationally. This is Corinne Corley. He's a self-advocate. I love J.K. Haynes, charter school. I can't say enough about them. And I don't see Ms. Haynes in them in here, but they know how I feel about this school and how much this school does in its community. But the problem is tonight is there's nothing on our board docs that talks about exactly what we were doing with the naming of J.K. Haynes Site. And as much as I would love to be up here and speak about wanting the name to add leadership, it's not reflected in board docs. And so we definitely have to pull the item until we can actually put that information in so that we're extremely transparent with the public, so that the public knows. Being someone that knows a lot of the people in that community, I'm sure that if they're watching, they would be extremely upset with me if I don't say that they're looking on board docs for the information like they did for every other item, and it's not there. And so we have to be transparent around the board. And last but definitely least, as we spoke about on the other topic, dealing with construction, I agree, Mr. Lewis, that we do need to make sure that the buildings are safe. But South Downs Pre-K kindergarten being on the list-
Okay, Ms. Corley. Ms. Corley. And they still have yet to be rebuilt.
So I'm going to reclaim all my time, 1:21 seconds for the next item.
Ms. Corley.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, comments from the board. Ms. Kennison.
My mic was on the whole time. What Ms. Corley brings up is an issue, I don't know that we need to, like, take it off, but we do need to make sure that backup is solid and there and ready for transparency's sake, so the public can know what we're doing, and also we can know too. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin.
Following on that point, and I know that we got the email from the system that it had just been an oversight, that that memo wasn't attached, but I've read the memo that we got by email this afternoon, and I would ask that that be revised before the meeting as well, before two weeks from now, because it actually lists two names as being the proposed school name. And my understanding is there's one recommended name, and I certainly support that for all the reasons that Vice President Powell stated. But I just want to make sure I don't see anything that prohibits us from voting on it next week, as long as we get the public, you know, that information before then.
Thank you. Mr. Lanis.
Yes, thank you. I just, I was just having a conversation with Madam Secretary, and she said that she was waiting for us to get to the item so that she could upload it. But what I've asked her to do, if she could, was to upload the item now to make it public for everybody. She said now is now live. So anybody that wants to see that document, it is now live, and you can go and click it. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments from the board, we will now entertain a vote.
Please vote.
The motion carries. Thank you. Item 8, bid, C-Tech Culinary, consideration of a request for the authorization for staff to advertise, accept the low bids, meetings, specifications, and make the award of a contract for the construction of C-Tech Culinary Kitchen, or reject any and all bids for just cause in accordance with the Louisiana Public Bid Law, Louisiana Revised Statute Title 38, Chapter 10, Strategic Alignment, Exemplary Customer Service, Funding Source, General Fund. Is there a motion? Okay, all right. It has been moved by Mr. Blue and seconded by Mr. Martin, and we will now entertain comments from the board. Mr. Lanis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'll be really quick. I just wanted to thank again the Baton Rouge North Economic Development District. They are the ones who brought this into fruition when they gave us a $50,000 check for us to start our culinary program, or at least by our, by the equipment for us to get that program started. So I'll be remiss if I didn't say thank you to those people who helped make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, comments from the public. Ms. Corley.
Coranda Corley, parent disabilities advocate nationally. This is my son, Corinne Corley, future self-advocate. I think that having a culinary program would be very wonderful, but having it, having everything at the C-Tech building is not accessible for children with disabilities or children in general that attend schools at Northeast High, Scullymea Magnet High, Woodlawn High. I mean, have y'all actually calculated the number of miles that the children would be on the bus to actually get from that school to the C-Tech building? What I would recommend is that we actually put a culinary program at all of the high schools. I had the opportunity to see what Tara High's culinary program can actually do, at a program that they actually catered for our school system. It was nothing short of remarkable to see those children do something great and beautiful, but they're getting to do it at their neighborhood school. So I think that we're not doing huge justice with the tax plan oversight, by the Tax Plan Oversight Committee, by making a recommendation to actually put the culinary program at C-Tech. My advice, and what I would strongly recommend, is that you, until you can figure out how you can get every student that would like to participate in this program to actually be able to get to C-Tech, that you actually put this program at every single high school. I'm very much aware that we've had people in the public in the past speak about programs that they wanted to see come back. Home ec. was one, and we know-
I'm sorry, Ms. Corley, point of order.
I'm sorry, stop my clock, Ms. April. It was at 1:15.
This item is specifically talking about the bidding process. It's not talking about the location, about C-Tech programming or anything. So I just want to bring you back and say, point of order, let's talk about the bidding process.
My time's still going.
Give it time back, Madam Secretary, but I just wanted to bring it back. It's about the bidding process. Thank you.
Right, and thank you for your point, Mr. President. We shouldn't bid on something that is not going to be accessible for every single child to have access to a program. I know that we talk about every student every day, but again, we're pushing programs that every child will not be able to attend due to access. Access means transportation. That's a point of access. Point of entry is another point of access. So I really don't think that we should do any kind of bid until we can make sure that every single child in our school system that's in high school would actually be able to be a participant in this program if they shall choose. That's what all of these programs by C-Tech is supposed to be about, and that's what I'm about, making sure every student every day can have that access. Thank you. And Ms. April, you didn't give me the rest of my time, but I'm going to claim it for the next one.
Thank you, Ms. Corley. Okay, seeing no other public comment cards, we will now return to the board. Mr. Martin.
Thank you. I support this item. I got to go see the C-Tech building for the first time a few weeks ago, and it's a fantastic building. You know, I do have a concern that I've heard from multiple sources that it's severely underutilized, that for a variety of reasons, transportation, concerns overtaking instructional minutes away from the home schools and things like that, that it hasn't been utilized to its full potential. It's a, it's a great facility, it's an expensive facility, and if we're going to keep adding to it, we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to eliminate whatever barriers are keeping it from being better utilized. So I'd encourage us to do that, and I strain a little bit from germane this, Mr. President, but you know, but I think that's an important point to be made. But I appreciate this, and on the bid process, I appreciate the way staff has gone about this and packaging it for our approval here. I support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have entered into the queue as well. I'm not sure if the person who can answer this question is here, because I don't know who would answer it, but, okay. So my question first of all is, do we offer home economics at other schools other than just having a culinary arts program?
I don't have the exact numbers here for you right now, Vice President Powell, I can look it up, but we do offer, we have other programs that we do have other schools, but I just don't have those exact numbers. I'd like to get the board the exact information so we can follow up on that. See our chief academic graph is here. We will pull that information. We can get that to the board before the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then also, I do agree with my colleague, Mr. Martin, in the fact that the C-Tech program is underutilized. I know that some of our schools, I've been at schools before, taught at schools before, where when it's time for the kids to go to the C-Tech building, they'll decide not to get on the bus and those kind of things. So we have to make sure as well that we hold our students accountable, and making sure that they take every opportunity to grow to their fullest potential. So that's just something that we may have to work on in-house as well, but I'm in total support of this item. Okay, Mr. Lewis.
Transportation has been, thank you. Transportation was an issue. C-Tech is one of my schools in my district, and I've had several conversations and visited with C-Tech, and to my knowledge, we have addressed some of those transportation issues, right, Doc? So again-
Yes, we have, and we've been working with the high schools on the scheduling. Right now, again, I don't want to give you information exact, but we actually have this year much more kids projected than the years before, so it's been a gradual progression for the last two years, but I'd like to give you exact information on that, so we can bring that back to the board.
Thank you. So it's not lost on anyone that the building and the program is underutilized, but like everything else, it takes time to build the capacity. And C-Tech was something relatively new to our students for a long time. It's a beautiful building, and I think, you know, when the dust settles, the building will be utilized to its fullest potential, and our kids, once they grasp, you know, what can happen there, not just in the culinary program, but the HVAC and all those other things that are off over there, C-Tech will be a success. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lanis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I want to actually bring up something that Ms. Corley did bring up, because her points were good. It's just that it wasn't on a particular item that we were discussing, but however, I will, I do want to open some dialogue about it. For schools like Northeast, they are a great distance away. Northeast is almost at the parish line, northern part of the parish line. I wonder, though, do we have the, do we have the capacity to do satellite sites at sites like Northeast High School, given the distance? Because that is a time issue, it is a transportation issue, and those things are very pertinent. Problems are concerns for parents. So I just want to, Mr. Secretary, Mr. Superintendent, do we have the capacity to do satellite districts for those types of schools?
Yeah, we can look into that. I think the issue is, we can do satellites in the sense of using the utilization of technology, it's just making sure there's equipment or the type of setup that the school has. C-Tech has a lot of hands-on pieces in classrooms in schools that are built for work-based experience. That's why we love the program. But for, it just depends on what the children's learning is. They do still have to go to an actual physical site to do hands-on work experience. Sorry about that. Yeah.
No problem. My last part of that is-
The other part that we are looking into is, we've, we're also in the process, and I know Ms. Pauling's not here, but I'm looking into our using companies where kids want to learn to see if they can do satellite spots for hands-on learning. So an example, I think I heard, was like Woodlawn High School. So children who want to be in, like, construction manufacturing, ABC is close to that high school, and so we can have students, we don't have to build a school, we can actually work with the company to do that. So we're, we're trying to change the strategy and approach that everything doesn't have to happen in the school, we'd like to have it at the companies, and so we've been working closely around with internships and those pieces to build that, that process out, specifically for students who want to get industry-based certifications and those things, and so we're excited about that shift.
Okay, my last part of the question is going to be, and this is not to take away from any of our C-Tech programs, all of them are phenomenal, all of them serve students that choose to go into those programs, but I do know that is a significant portion of our community that has been asking for quite some time about barbering and cosmetology. Are those possible? is, are those possible, uh, CTEC spaces that we can look into? Because in the same sense of how you just said, A, ABC going to Woodlawn, that being a good, uh, corrective situation, I think that barbers, they could actually go to schools, it's an easy setup, it doesn't cost as much, and it's easy for them to get those certifications inside of those, and they can go into being an entrepreneur. So you can actually tie leadership and entrepreneurship into those things too, so I'm just curious.
Uh, yeah, uh, we're actually, um, in the process of doing some of that already. Um, if you look at Glen Oaks High School, uh, school in your area, where we starting to partner with barbers to do that, uh, that's a matter of, you know, a chair and setting up, uh, kids to be there, so, um, those are things we're looking into as well.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you all, so we're not gonna address that our president was completely not germane to the topic. All right. Okay. All right, so we have had board comment, public comment, board comment, and it is now time for a vote.
Please vote.
And thank you. Moving to item nine, bid, BR Flame, consideration of a request to accept the low bid from Sienna Construction for the BR Flame four Classroom Edition project. Strategic Alignment, Student Achievement, Funding Source, General Fund. Is there a motion? Okay, all right. It has been moved by Mr. Gode and seconded by Mr. Lanis. We will now, uh, go to board comment. Ms. Kennison.
Thank you. Um, I think this is on the topic. Um, is there, so this is a four classroom, classroom expansion, are we doing anything with the bathrooms? From what I understand, there's a bathroom issue there, that it was built as a middle school, um, that there's already a, a bathroom issue, and if we're adding four more classrooms, have we, um, tied fixing the restroom situation in there at all, or we didn't make it worse?
No, so we're renovating one of the ver- restrooms in the downstairs to accommodate for the pre-K for those two classrooms, but the restrooms you have were built to that building code at that time. Uh, we're not adding any more restrooms at this time.
Okay, so we're adding to the issue then? Okay. Uh, I think that's it for now, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gode.
Yes, Mr. Morales, if you could, uh, 'cause I think there's some misunderstandings that've been around this project, could you review what it is? This is not adding square footage necessarily to the building, this is renovating existing unused space. Is that correct?
Correct.
Could you just walk through the board on that process?
Yes, so this is on the second story of the gymnasium area, which used to be classrooms at one point in time, uh, I don't know when, 'cause I haven't been here that long, but they vacated them. Uh, they was actually in renovation phase a couple of years ago, so they was already adding classrooms, and they stopped for whatever reason, and so now what we're doing is we're just tearing down the old walls, and we're putting new walls up and making four classrooms on the right-hand side.
So this is really taking an open space and, and dividing it up into classrooms, more or less an open space, and dividing up, but there, there's no new square footage being added to the building or anything like that?
No, it's using existing square footage.
'Cause when they talk about, and, and you might wanna rephrase the letter or something, when they talk about the addition of, uh, of a four classroom addition, it really isn't a four classroom addition, it's really a four classroom-
Renovation.
Renovation, uh, into that, because they're not adding, uh, any square footage to the building.
Correct, and actually to add to you that, we actually are adding a bathroom upstairs, though, so, I'm sorry, I misspoke, we are adding a restroom upstairs for those students in those classrooms. Sorry.
So there's a restroom going in upstairs, plus in the pre-K, there's gonna be restrooms in the-
So downstairs, there's two rooms that's already being utilized, there's a bathroom that's in between those two rooms, and we're changing the fixtures to accommodate for pre-K three in there. And then upstairs, we putting those four classrooms in that space, and we're adding a boys' and girls' restroom up there.
Okay.
Sorry. My pleasure.
Thank you. I, I, when people read addition, I think they were getting the wrong impression of what this was.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
Okay, Mr. Smith, let me ask, um, this is a one, 1.197 million dollar renovation?
I can't speak to the exact number.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at it right here.
Okay, yes, yes.
So, it, with the Sienna Construction Company, so is there, is, is our DBE policy-
Yes.
-a part of this?
That particular project did have to follow our, our recommended, uh, women minority on fair share policy-
Right.
-by which there's an expectation and a goal of 20% participation on that particular project.
Okay.
Uh, now, but one of the challenges sometimes in a smaller company, they may do more self-performing, so therefore they are not using as many subs, and sometimes that does lower the number. But also, there's also the design part and all of that, and when we factor all of that in, uh, we look at trying to reach our 20% goal.
And we refer to those businesses, not necessarily because they're disadvantaged, they're just smaller, they don't have a lot of the bonding, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, and, and they don't have the, the opportunity to work with a lo- uh, larger contractors or-
Uh, we follow the, the industry standard of what defines a small company-
Right.
-and it is under certain, uh, economic thresholds, and when we look at projects like this, they do have the right to bid as a, as a prime contractor, but sometimes they choose to be a part of, of someone else.
Why have you found that's been the, an issue? Because the bond, is it a bonding issue with most of these companies, or capacity to do the work?
Sometimes it's capacity.
Okay.
It's capacity, but I would not wanna speak out of turn exactly what the issue-
And I'm trying not to, so, okay.
But there are several factors that go into it, sometimes it's capacity, sometimes, and, most of the time, it's capacity.
Okay, but they're in the game?
They're in the game, they're at the table, they're there, they're a part of the process, that's why we bring them on early at the pre-bid meeting, so they can see what's going on, they get an, an overview of the scope of work, so they are just as advantaged as someone else when it comes down to being able to bid on a particular project.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Ren.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Martin. All right, thank you. Seeing no other comments from the board, we will now move to comments from the public. When you come to the mic, if you'll please state your name for us.
I'm Tanya McMillan, uh, this is my son Riley Broomfield McMillan, he's a third grader at Baton Rouge Flame. Um, thank you guys so much and for hearing us this evening, and I know that we are now at, at the bid process, um, but I, I'm also aware that there were supposed to be two stakeholder meetings before we even got to this process, and I believe that board member, um, Mr. Gode brought that up a couple of months ago at a meeting, and we had a administrator here from our school who said that the first stakeholder meeting took place at a PTO meeting, the PTO was not aware that that was supposed to have taken place at a PTO meeting, so there has not been a first nor a second stakeholder meeting regarding this expansion. The, um, at one point, the public was told that we were gonna be expanding upward sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, and then all of a sudden, it was pre-K, and there was no stakeholder meeting or involvement or conversation about that, so I just want the board to know that. Okay? And then Riley wanted to say something about the school or the, okay. He, as we were sitting there, he was saying, tell them we need our, our playground redone, because when it rains outside, it puddles, and the kids can't go outside and play, and he wants the basketball courts redone, so they have somewhere to play when it's wet outside. So that's what he wanted to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Corranta Corley, parent disabilities advocate, Corinth Corley, self-advocate, and I would like to take a moment of personal privilege to thank that parent and her child for actually coming and stating how important it is for the PTO to be involved and their voices be heard, and that it is very despicable that they were not included, uh, um, in regards to this particular topic. Um, when we talk about Baton Rouge Flame, I'm sure that everybody is aware of a lot of issues that have been occurring at Baton Rouge Flame, and it's extremely problematic. Um, children with disabilities, that, they're housed in a closet in the auditorium. Oh, I'm sorry, it's, it's the gymnasium. That's where the kids with disabilities are housed at. Um, that's a problem, because you're having segregation within a school. Um, she mentioned a playground. The playground, uh, is actually gravel, gravel, so that is not in American Disabilities Act compliance, but you have children with disabilities that attend at school. Um, when, when we talk about having bids come forth in regards to, um, renovating school, not necessarily that we're adding space, but renovating, we need to make sure that those renovations are in American Disability Act compliance. There's a lot of kids with disabilities over at Baton Rouge Flame, whether you realize it or not, but because none of the board members are actually getting up and going over there to see and actually attend these PTO meetings to actually hear from those parents firsthand, you don't know it. And because we start our meeting at five o'clock when most parents are getting off from work, and we don't provide food or something to drink, so that they don't have to go home and try to cook to feed their kids before they could come and actually speak up and have their voice heard, you would never hear from the public. So when it comes back to election time, think about that, because that's the same people you're gonna be asking for to vote for you that actually may not. So when it talks about Baton Rouge Flame, pull this item and take it to their PTO and hear their voices about what renovations look like, because for all you know, they may want gender-neutral bathrooms, and that is something that is new, that's being discussed during legislative session. I'm just telling you what we're not, since we like to use the word innovative, we're not being innovative, we're not being creative, and we're not being realistic. Being realistic mean hearing those voices. That baby probably'll talk to you if you ain't have him on camera, so I'm just telling you to go talk to these kids and talk to their families. Take the item off until you do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corley. Um, any other public comment? I don't think I see any other, uh, cards in the queue, so we will go back to, uh, board comment, and I have entered the queue. Um, I just simply wanted to ask, have we indeed not had any stakeholder meetings in regards to this bidding process and/or the BR Flame project?
So we've been working with, uh, Ms. McBride for this process, and so during the process, she was giving the updates at the PTO meeting, letting them know about the expansion, uh, their expansion of their program, because actually this is through a grant, is why they're expanding their grade level, and so she was giving the PTO those updates at that time.
So I think what, uh, the public seems to be asking for is whether or not there was a standalone meeting that was outside of the scope of the PTO meetings.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Did we, did we promise that though? So that's my next question, is did we promise that to the public?
Yeah, let, let me, Vice President Powell, get, uh, more information on that, because I know that, uh, BR Flame qualified for the Reimagining Grant, which was given from the state, and there were a subset of requirements of, uh, community engagement, that's why we'd like to talk to, uh, Principal McBride. I don't wanna give a response just 'cause I could, we can give you specifics of what the dates when that, when they engage those things.
Thank you so much. So I know that with me leading this meeting, I can't give any substitute motions, but I sure hope that my colleagues will on my behalf. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Vice President Powell. Um, I went back a couple of meetings ago and pulled up the agenda from our March meeting, excuse me, and at that meeting, we were presented with diagrams of what the changes are, are. We had public comment on, on it at that time, um, and, and we voted in favor of the expansion. So I would be concerned about, you know, you know, the, 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 we've already had a public meeting where we voted in favor of the basic expansion design, so I wouldn't think that we would wanna revisit that just in conjunction with the, the, the simple award of the low-cost bid, right? 'Cause we've already advertised this, we, we put these drawings out to the contractor community to bid and whatnot, and, and so if we were to change those, at this point, I suspect, Mr. Morales, we'd have to go back out to, to rebid if we were to make any changes, um, uh, to that. So, uh, hopefully the public, you know, was made aware of this design, 'cause it was in our minutes and, and was, you know, promulgated to the public at that time. But, but I wouldn't, I would suggest that, you know, again, because we're all new, we hear that a lot, right? Um, an, an understanding, uh, of, of our overall process, uh, to ensure that there is stakeholder engagement at the appropriate stages of design and board approval, and understand, you know, what's the normal process for board approval of different things, right? The time to question what the design is is not in accepting the award, you know, accepting the bids, right? That's beforehand, and we just need to get some clarity so that we make sure that we can tell the public and make sure your staff follow the same process every time for these things.
Thank you. Mr. Gode.
Uh, yes, thank you, Vice President Powell. Um, I spent some time at VRP, VPA, uh, particularly at the site where they were doing the thing about the, um, uh, the leasing of the land, and I spoke to Ms. McBride and, BR Flame, I'm sorry, uh, I spoke to Ms. McBride and I also spoke to the head of the PTO, uh, at the time. Both of them considered they fully met the requirements, so I just caution that you're getting one side of the story from one person, and that may or may not be the entire story, uh, 'cause I spoke personally with the head of the PTO, and she was fully aware of what had been going on, and, uh, was fully in agreement, as least that's what was represented to me. So there, there are many, many viewpoints and opinions about lots of things, so I just caution us to jump off a ledge, uh, just, just with one person, uh, speaking on that. So I appreciate the public coming to speak, but the public is always the public, but there's always multiple sides to the, to the issue, and as far as I know, in talking directly with the PTO head, uh, she was perfectly satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart.
I just wanted to comment, or, well, rather, uh, inquiry, uh, on this subject matter in regards to the meeting and those, uh, parents and persons that are interested in, uh, what one of the public, uh, constituents came out and indicated. If there wasn't a particular meeting to speak specifically about this expansion outside of the PTO, I think there should be. I mean, the concern is that, uh, they wanna know, or that we said that there would be two phases or two meetings, and if there weren't two meetings, then I recommend doing a substitute motion and allow the meetings to take place so that there can be a voice heard from those persons, uh, in regards to us indicating that we would have those two meetings.
So is there, that's a-
That's a motion for substitution of, uh, this to, uh, substitute it so that I guess that there can be meetings held, at least one meeting specifically, not in conjunction with the PTO. Even though the PTO, uh, president said that it was covered, uh, but we indicated that there would be two meetings, not inclusive of it being in conjunction with the PTO meeting. So I think we should, we need to have that, anything, anything.
As a point of order, is the resolution to defer without recommendation?
There you go, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
To the reg- to the regular meeting. Yeah.
Okay, so, so is that-
How I said, Gwen.
You did a good job. So substitute motion to defer without recommendation to the regular meeting to allow for-
For the meeting to take place, uh, for the constituents or the persons of the school outside of the PTO meeting. Is that too much? Okay. Gotcha.
Okay, so, so it has been moved by Ms. Stewart, and seconded?
I'm the, uh, second, I'm the original.
Oh, he on the second.
Okay, so, so, okay, first of all, Mr. Shamlin, just, just for the, the, me, could, could you restate that motion for us, please?
It was just a second.
Okay.
This is a substitute motion to send-
This is a substitute motion to send the consideration of request to accept the low bid from Sienna Construction for the BR Flame Four Classroom Addition Project to the full board without recommendation to allow for necessary meetings to take place.
Okay. So that means that those two meetings need to take place before we have the full board meeting?
Matt, point of order, could we make it so that they have one public meeting?
What if I say at least one?
One public meeting. Because there's no way to have two between now and then.
We didn't specify a number, we said necessary meetings, but we can...
Meetings is plural.
Okay, so we can specify one.
You can specify one, as I indicated, at least have one meeting, yeah.
So at least one.
Have a meeting, have a meeting.
A meeting, okay, gotcha. Okay, so one more time, one more time for us, please.
Substitute motion to send the consideration of request to accept the low bid from Sienna Construction for the BR Flame Four Classroom Addition Project to the full board without recommendation to allow for a meeting to take place.
Okay, so it has been moved by Ms. Stewart, thank you. Is there a second? Okay, and it has been seconded by Ms. Kennison, and so we are now entering into board comment in regards to the substitute motion. Ms. Kennison, would you still like to speak?
Yes.
Okay, all right, Ms. Kennison.
Thank you, madam, for coming here today, for speaking. I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. I barely remember anybody's name. Your voice is just as important as anyone's up here. To be told anything different is not okay. The fact that you and the audience are here, you're just as important, if not more so. You guys know what's going on in these schools, there's issues that are important to you. Thank you all for coming. Please keep doing it, it makes a difference. We are up here to represent people like you. We're not up here for anything other than that, and we need to hear from you guys. So thank you again. I believe that it was required in the grant to have stakeholder meetings. I'm not sure if it's one or two, but it was a requirement. So, you know, we didn't make sure we're doing these things correctly. I highly suggest that if we don't have, we need to find out if it is one or two that's required. And if there's two required, we need to have two stakeholder meetings before we approve this. So if it needs to be deferred past two weeks from now, it is our responsibility to vote no if the people at the school and people who are interested don't get a chance to be heard. It's ridiculous to just try to steamroll these processes and to make the people who come here feel anything less than valued. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennison. Mr. Lanis?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I think some excellent points have been made. I think in this particular instance, a lot has been said, but I think at the very least, we are in a place where we have to honor what we say. And I think those families do deserve to receive that information. If but anything, to know what the school is going to look like before they send their kids back there. I won't belabor or go on and on and on about the situation, but I'll just say, if there are any families that are out there that feel like their voices were not heard, we apologize, we want to make corrections for that. I thank you, Ms. Stewart, for bringing forth the substitute motion so we can have a meeting to discuss what that's going to look like for families. Because that's what we're in the business of, is making sure that we hear all of our families and make sure we take care of our entire community. So thank you for coming up and having the courage to do that, and also thank you, son, too.
Thank you. Mr. Baloo?
Thank you. I'm just a little bit confused. I know there was mention as part of the grant, you said it required public engagement. I don't, was it anything specifically and what was not? Because I've heard talk about two meetings, I don't know, I don't remember anything. I just want to know exactly what was required.
So there were requirements of engagement in the Reimagined Grant. What I'd like to do is get that information because I don't want the board not to have the full information. So that's the reason why I said let us go back. I mean, that's something we can get pretty quickly. But I do know they went through a process of subset of engagements. They worked through with Principal McBride, who's the principal there, but I'm not sure if it was just the PTO or just whatever the group segment, I was not in that space. But I will get that information right away. The community, that community is very an engaging community, so I'd be a little shocked, but you know, I'm glad a parent is here. So we'll look into that to see what the process has been. But a part of the grant for Reimagined was to include that. So I just need us to have a little more time to look into that.
In the way the substitute motion is worded, does it require an additional meeting or just that the necessary meetings?
It just requires a meeting, so it's one meeting.
So it's possible that necessary meetings have already taken place, but we need, we would still require another additional meeting?
Based upon the motion on the floor, that's correct.
That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. A couple of questions from Mr. Morales. So first of all, when does construction need to start on this renovation in order for it to open in time for the start of the school year it's scheduled to open?
It's when the school ends.
So if we were to not approve the award of this contract to the low bidder, which, you know, if we were not to approve that at the upcoming full board meeting, then we would be at risk that the project would not open in time.
You would not make it.
It would not open in time. All right, so second question. The invitation to bid goes out and it has designs from the architect attached, right? And the bid is very specific to those specific drawings, correct?
Correct.
And so if we made, what level of change could be made to those drawings without having to re-advertise the bid?
I don't know what you would change at this point. We're adding four classrooms because that's the space that we have available upstairs. And your classrooms downstairs are already existing classrooms that, one of them was already a pre-K classroom and the other one was not being utilized, but now we're just going to utilize it.
So if we, for example, if somebody, if at this public meeting that we're talking about having, if somebody said, well, I think they need to add two more bathrooms, you know, or whatever, if we added two more bathrooms in the design, that would affect the budget and we would have to go rebid correctly. And the rebid process is...
Twenty-five day process minimum just for advertisement.
Right. And that's not even counting the time it would take for the architects to actually make the changes to the drawing.
Correct.
So colleagues, my concern is that if we have a public hearing at this point, we're offering false hope of any possibility to change. We can't just, you know, if it's any substantive change at all, then that means that the renovations to Flame will be pushed back by an entire year. Because there's no point, you can't do those renovations and have it open in September or October, right? We can't just delay by two months and then have everything be hunky-dory. So my concern is that at this point, if we, that to say we're going to have a public meeting and take feedback is really meaningless because if we accept any feedback, we will delay the project by a year. So that's my concern, is I certainly, you know, would like to have more information , hope by the next meeting, get more information about what public engagement there has been. Because I feel fairly certain this is not a, this is not a school lacking in parents with voices and making sure their voices are heard generally. And so my concern is simply that. So I reluctantly oppose the substitute motion because I don't think that there's a meaningful opportunity for additional public engagement at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Godey?
Yes, thank you. I want to maybe correct some impressions that some people may have. Maybe it was my inarticulate choice of words. I was trying to do the best I could. But the only thing I was trying to point out is that we have one opinion being voiced here at the mic without anyone from the school administration or the PTO to voice any other opinion, which were told to me directly that they thought that all of that had been done. So that was the only point I was trying to bring out. Thank you for coming to the meeting. It's certainly your right, and we certainly value your input. But as everything else, there's always two sides to the story, and we don't have two sides here. And so I will be voting against the substitute motion for the reasons that Mr. Martin just gave out. I think that this is something that needs to be done. I personally walked the space that's going to be redone. Really don't see any other real uses for that. And I think just delaying this is just delaying this. And again, we can have time to speak to the principal and the PTO lead, and if they decide they want to have another meeting, anyone can pull it at the next meeting if they're not satisfied. But I think we're starting to get a little lower in the grass than maybe we should be. Because I do think that a lot of this has been covered with the parents. As you said, that's a very active parent group. Ms. Powell was at the meeting that I was, there was discussion about that, and I talked to some of the parents about this. There was obviously a lot of parents who knew exactly what was going on with this. So is it 100%? I don't know. But I do know, again, talking with the PTO lead, that there was a lot of discussion and a lot of input going on. And they felt that they met those requirements. So we have one opinion being voiced here, I'm giving you another opinion that was voiced to me, and you have to make your own decision. So thank you.
Okay, so I'm not sure of how to manipulate the queue. Of course, Mr. Lanis has entered the queue, but it's for after-public comment, okay, for after-public comment as well. And I know that I have not made a comment on the substitute motion, but, okay, all right, so, okay, all right. So what I will do is this, you know, you all, I think for some of my colleagues, I don't think we quite understand, you know, what is the reasoning for why we have entered the substitute motion and why I may even be in support of it. But the reality is that we were elected to be a voice for citizens. And so number one, we have to understand facts that are given. So right now, our superintendent has said that there is no clarity about what the grant says. So in the case that the grant says we need to have hypothetically 5,000 meetings, and we have not had but 4,499, number one, we could lose the grant. Number two, we're not here as figureheads. We were elected by people. And so with that in mind, it is our duty to hear their voices. So even if we said there's a meeting, as we've had many, many meetings, those of us that sit on this, in this, in Coach Lewis's words, horseshoe, where people present information to us and we're given the opportunity to ask questions, even if we're not given the opportunity to share our voices as far as an opinion is concerned, we should also be willing to give our parents who send kids to our schools the opportunity to hear the information and ask questions if they like. That's what a democracy is. So if we don't understand that, we're in the wrong business. I have a child, I want my voice to be heard. If you have children, you want your voice to be heard. You want to know the information firsthand, and you want to make sure that you follow the rules. So I'm sorry if we've never read grants before, if you've never had a grant before, if you've never understood the ramifications of a grant before, but if you don't follow the rules, you can lose your grant. I just hope that we understand that. So moving forward, we are now moving to our public comment, and this is on the substitute motion. And this would be Ms. Corley.
Coraith Corley, future self-advocate. Thank you, Ms. Powell, for that comment. Because I think that it definitely needed to be stated. And I think that our board seems to forget that we trust our kids with you every single day. And when you don't hear our voices, and when you refuse to talk to us, and you refuse to listen and meet with us, you are creating a hostile environment that make us not want to have you represent us and not want to send our kids back to you. This is part of the reason why we have a great exodus of staff leaving from the school system, because you're not listening to the people. You're not listening to the people that you're supposed to be sitting up here representing every single time you come into this building. And it's a problem. These children, yes. Do they need bathrooms renovated? Yes, but they also need classrooms renovated. And the teachers need support staff, and the teachers need materials to be able to teach the kids. The cafeteria workers need the proper, appropriate food to be able to feed the children, and they need the materials to be able to cook with. It's a lot that they use. But the misappropriations of federal funds that's been occurring courtesy of a board that those people keep electing is a problem. Because you don't want to listen to what the people have to say. Ms. Kennison brought up a great point, read. You want to talk about, you want to teach all the kids, every student, every day, but you failing to read? Whoa! Talk about a pack calling a cattle black, a Judas in the building. You definitely cannot tell these kids that they need to learn how to read and literacy is so important, but you failing to read the grant yourself. No, that is a problem. It's going to always be a problem. And no, you should not tell that parent that her voice didn't matter. Ms. McBride on the way out, she gonna be gone at the end of the last day of school. So why you gonna go back to her? Talk to the PTO. It's just that easy, just that simple. And next time, don't tell the PTO that they should not have their voices heard at a PTO meeting, because where exactly are they supposed to voice their concerns? Because you don't want them to voice it when they come up here to the mic. I'm just telling you, do due diligence, do what you're supposed to do legally because that would be an ethical violation if you fail to follow the grant because you failed to read. But also, parents, everybody that's watching the meeting, you have the right to write a petition. If your board member is not representing you and listening to your voice, get them out. Get them out. Tell them, hit the road, Jack, don't come back no more. And that's all that we gonna say, folks. Good day.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments, comment cards from the public, we're now returned to the board. Mr. Lanis?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. I'm not going to beat this issue or try to prolong it any longer. The only thing for me that was worrisome was the fact that it's not even the clarity around language. If the language said that you had to have engagement, that can be preceded in several different ways. The problem that I heard was that it happened during a PTO meeting and the parents didn't know. So they didn't even have time to come up with questions that they wanted to ask. So that is the issue. And I think even having the one meeting, it's not going to change the scope of the work because we've already approved that, but it does give them the ability to get this information. Because as the parent said, she said at one point, we said we're going to move up and go from, we're going to build grade levels up. And then she said it came back and it changed. And if that is the case, parents should know about that. They should definitely know about that. Because, one, taxpayer dollars are being used, and, two, it's just a simple courtesy of letting them get, receive information as it pertains to the school that their child has to go to. So this is not to be adversarial or anything in that nature, but I do think that it is thoroughly important that we follow, we follow what we say we're going to do, even though, you know, even if it comes back that we actually did have an engagement. I think that still allow that one meeting, because I don't think it's going to change anything, but it gives them the ability to know all the information before we vote on this. Because I can guarantee you, had no one said that, that we did every meeting, I can guarantee you every board member would have voted for this. Nobody's against what's happening at Flame, but we have to do it in the right way. So I'll just stop there. Thank you.
Ms. Stewart?
I'll be brief.
I'll be brief. I just wanted to make some clarity as well. My substitute motion wasn't to stop the bidding process. It was only to recommend that a meeting be held if one wasn't held. And then I asked the question, do we know for sure that one was held outside of the PTO meeting and no one knew? So my substitute motion dealt with having a meeting specifically so that the family and community can be, you know, properly informed, not to stop the bidding, but to have them informed if a meeting was not held. That was the purpose of the substitute motion.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
I stepped out to make a phone call. No, the reason, my next door neighbor has one child that has gone all the way through Flame, has two babies at Flame now. And I asked Dave, was he aware of these meetings? He says he realized, he says there's been discussion around it, but it hasn't been a lot of controversy where, you know, he doesn't know of any parents being, you know, disapproving of this. But he said there has been a lot of conversation around these additions at Flame this year. And I asked, did he have on his basketball shorts, because he likes to play basketball? He says, "Yeah, but I can't come down there." You know, but, so I'm joking. But he says that there's been conversation around Flame about these additions, but to his knowledge, none of the parents are disapproving. And I made that call, Mike, because I just wanted to get another parent.
Same thing.
Yeah, I just wanted to get another parent. He said that there was no controversy around it in the schools.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Okay, and so I am in the queue. First, I wanted to give a point of clarity. I know, Mr. Goddard, you said that we went to a meeting at the school. The meeting that we attended was actually in regards to the interstate widening. And so, of course, that was neither a PTO meeting, but a meeting about specifically the interstate widening. It was not in regards to the addition of classrooms either. So still, the statement still remains, so Coach, I would ask you, did the gentleman say whether or not there was a stakeholder meeting about the additions? And then my statement would still be the same to Dr. Narcisse of, we need to know what the ramifications of the grant are. But did he say specifically that there was a stakeholder meeting?
And I'm going to turn my best to quote Dave. He said that some parents are more plugged in than others, okay? He said that he was not aware of any particular meeting, but he says there's conversation that is taking place in the school, and to his knowledge, no one is complaining.
Okay, so thank you. So still, there is what is considered as legal ramifications. With all of our nice attorneys that are on this board, y'all know what legal ramifications are. So I sure hope that we are making sure that we are meeting the requirements of the grant. Thank you. Mr. Martin.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. First of all, I think the very fact that we're having this discussion is an indication of why we need to have clarity around a policy for how we do this whenever we're doing renovations or new construction, right? So that we don't have to know, do we do this or not? It's in the policy, we do this, right? And then we do it every time, so we don't reinvent the wheel. Now, you know, I don't know that it really makes a difference how we vote on the substitute motion, if we're still going there. You know, my concern is twofold, to your points about democracy, Madam Vice President. We also have to have finality of decisions, right? Once we voted on something, we can't have it come back up every single, you know, every month, right? And so in March, we all voted unanimously, if I remember correctly, you may have been opposed to it, I don't remember, but on a plan to do this renovation. And that, and I'm looking at it right now, had site plans, floor plans, construction diagrams of what was going to be done in these renovations. So we, democracy has had its opportunity, we have voted on that. Now, maybe we shouldn't have, maybe we should have had the public engagement beforehand, and that goes to the lack of policy and clarity about when these things are supposed to happen, right? So we all collectively understand, what are we voting on? Now, this is the second or maybe the third time we're voting on this Flame expansion, right? And that gets, I know it gets confusing to me. Where are we in the process? What issues are we supposed to consider when we're awarding the bid versus when we're considering whether to do the project at all and so forth? So, but my concern is just to make sure everybody understands that if anything changes about these designs as a result of this public engagement session, then we would have to delay the project by a year because that's how long, because we're at the very edge of the construction window to start construction in order to finish it on time. So that's my concern, is about giving the show of public engagement when the reality is, is that we couldn't afford to make significant changes to this at this point if we're going to continue with this very important, very necessary project.
Thank you. Ms. Kennison.
To Mr. Martin's point, I think that at the, whenever we voted on these plans he's speaking of, we did that part democratically, but how it came to that, did we do all that correctly? Like, I think we need to take a look at what's happening here. We're all very confused. Is this by design, or is it just simple disorganization? I think we obviously need to hear from the stakeholders, from the parents of Flame, and have these meetings. And like, if it does need to get pushed back a year, at least we'll know that that's what they want. Maybe they don't even want it right now. Like, if they're, I've spoken to some other Flame parents, that they're, the consensus is perhaps neutral about it. So there's no big, huge rush to put these four classrooms here. There's other issues, and we're talking about over a million dollars. Like, what if we need to scrap the plans and do something else? Like, there's, we keep getting caught in this, well, it's already this far down the line, there's nothing we can do. Well, there is something we can do, and we're going to do it now, hopefully. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments in the queue, we're now about to vote on the substitute motion, which is to defer the item without recommendation and to...
To allow for a meeting.
To allow for a stakeholder meeting to take place within the next two weeks, I guess.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so we will now cast our votes.
Please vote. Sorry, it didn't open. Now, please vote.
Thank you. All right, we are now into item 10, contract Otis elevator. Consideration of a request for the approval of a contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Otis Elevator in the amount of $45,300 per year for five years for maintenance and repairs on district elevators. Strategic alignment, operational excellence, funding source, general fund. Is there a motion? Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Russ and seconded by Mr. Baloo. Comments from the board. Seeing none, we will now entertain comments from the public. Ms. Corley.
We're on the elevator, right? Okay, it's still showing like we on Flame, and I thought we was on the elevator. Okay. Some of our schools are actually being, some of our newer schools, like Braumwood Elementary, are being built with elevators in them. So I do think that we should enter into a contract with a company that can actually make sure that our elevators continue to work. Because, of course, you know, we do have staff and children with disabilities that actually matriculate into the buildings. I do like to thank and show a great appreciation to the staff, especially those that work with our children with disabilities and those themselves that have disabilities, because it's a challenge. Especially when we're building our buildings, instead of being flat, we're building them two-story. So we're not thinking about safety at hand, especially like in the event of a fire, they can't use the elevator to get back out or to come back down. So I do think that we should enter into a contract with a very prudent company that actually knows much about elevators. See, Mr. Martin, I'm shocking you today, on actually speaking for something. I would like for us to actually have a company that actually knows what they doing, to actually work on these elevators. But I do think that we also need to look at, when we build our buildings from here on out, that we just make the buildings in like a L or circle shape instead of having them go up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corley. Ms. Matthews.
Elevators? On the elevator? Can I see it?
Yeah, it was in the wrong place, sorry.
I go with the elevator.
That's all right, I got it now. Okay, so seeing no other public comment cards for item 10, we will now return to comments from the board. Okay, seeing none, we will entertain a vote.
Please vote.
Thank you. Moving to item 11, professional services contracts, exceptional student services. Consideration of a request for the approval of professional services contracts between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the following. A, Dr. Kishadra L. Williams, sundry behavioral services in the amount of $60,000 to provide applied behavior analysis services. Alphabet D, B, Alphabet B, y'all. Adaptive Solutions and Sherry Hollingsworth in the amount of $20,000 to provide assistive technology assistance services. C, Def Resource Center for Greater Baton Rouge LLC in the amount of $80,000 to provide qualified sign language interpreter services to students. Alphabet D, Audio Optical Systems of Austin Incorporated in the amount of $51,684 to provide a comprehensive text-to-speech integrated literacy solution. Alphabet E, Allied Instructional Services LLC in the amount of $25,000 to provide orientation and mobility services to students. Alphabet F, Turner LLC in the amount of $847,000 to provide nursing services to students with disabilities. Alphabet G, Chase Healthcare in the amount of $77,000 to provide nursing services to students with disabilities. Alphabet H, Pediatric Services of America LLC, doing business as Aviana Healthcare in the amount of $539,000 to provide nursing services to students with disabilities. Alphabet I, Egan Healthcare Corporation, doing business as Egan Ashner HCBS River Parishes in the amount of $166,000 to provide nursing services to students with disabilities. Funding source, IDEA Part B, strategic alignment, student achievement. All right, is there a motion?
Move.
Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Lanis and seconded by Mr. Lewis. Is there a presentation on this item? Thank you, thank you, Dr., no presentation?
No presentation.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Smith. All right, so we will now turn to comments from the board. Okay, seeing none, turning to comments from the public. Ms. Matthews.
I'd like to speak about Kurzweil, which you guys have that's under the audio optical. Kurzweil is a phenomenal program that our sped students use, have been using for years. It helps students be able to read. It reads to them, it has different voices, they can pick the voice that they are most comfortable with. It actually has shown for kids who have print disability that it increases their comprehension level. It's a wonderful, wonderful program. The only issue I'd like to bring up is that the state of Louisiana, last week, in the middle of testing, threw in, not allowing our children with federal IEPs to use what they've been using all year in their federal IEPs. Now, I'd like to commend accountability and our special ed department for rising to the occasion to make sure that my child had his accommodations and he will be taking his test with accommodations. So no federal lawsuit from EBR. But the fact that the state is not allowing our kids to use the program they've been using all year, which is a wonderful, wonderful program, and it's available for all of our sped students, our ELL students, and I found out for even our regular ed students who can benefit from it. So I think that something needs to be done, maybe on the state level, because the federal government trumps state, period. And so something needs to be done to, so where they need to use what the, hold on, use your words, Storm. They have to follow the federal IEPs, period. And so if this is what's being used the entire year, that's what needs to be done. And it's a wonderful, wonderful program. It's been used for years by EBR. And so we need to do something via the state. I don't know what needs to be filed with the state, because like I said, it's not an EBR problem. It's at the state level. EBR did a wonderful job. But something needs to be done to make sure these kids have access to their accommodations for state testing. And, what else did I want to say? That new thing they wanted them to use, co-rider, it was the kids that did have to use it that aren't my kid, it was very, very difficult for them to use. Kurzweil is just absolutely wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, comment cards, we will now return to comments from the board. Thank you.
Corranda Corley, parent disabilities advocate. Corrith Corley, future self-advocate. Y'all, oh, I'm sorry. Y'all know I would always speak, I'm not going to ever not speak for something dealing with our children with disabilities. Dr. Kishadra Williams has been a real true blessing. The one thing I can say about her contract is it needs to be expanded for all our children that fall under IDEA. Because what Dr. Kishadra Williams provide is not just doing functional behavior assessments, not just applied behavior analysis, but she also can provide clinical psychology services. Some of our children that have IEPs need counseling. She brings a very special gift, considering that she has a PhD in two different areas. She bring a real, a real great service to children, especially mine. We've had the opportunity to work with Dr. Williams every year, and every single year my child improves. Every single year, he has made progress under her leadership. So yes, expand her services. $60,000, that's not a lot, but we really need to give her more so that she can reach more children. And I was... in our school system, um, especially in the climate that we live in today. Um, I think that we also need to expand our nursing services to our children with disabilities, because if, if the child have a child-specific power, that nurse only works with that child that they're identified to work with. My child has severe medical problems. But if there's not a chi- a nurse at that school, then he cannot get medical attention. So, we have to be mindful of the services that we provide and look at that we're providing a service that's meaningful and that's appropriate, that's free, that allow the children with disabilities to appropriately be able to be educated in our buildings. And it keeps them from missing school, which is extremely important. So, I do think that we should not just keep this, but also increase the amount of staff that we have that fall up under these programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other public comment cards, we will now return to comments from the board. Okay, seeing none, we will enter into a vote.
Please vote.
Mr. Lanis?
Roll call? Okay. The motion carries.
Thank you. Item 12, professional services contract, non-public. Consideration of a request for the approval of professional services contracts between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the following. A, Catapult Learning in the amount of $30,000 for the 2023 Catholic Schools Teacher Summer Institute. Alphabet B, Inspire Ed Consulting LLC in the amount of $64,000 for the 2023 Diocese of Baton Rouge Summer Leadership Summit. Funding source, Title II, non-public. Is there a motion? Okay, it has been moved by Ms. Stewart. Is there a second? It has been seconded by Mr. Russ. Uh, comments from the board, Mr. Lanis?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I won't be long on this at all. I'll just ask General Counsel to explain to the board in public, uh, why, why this item is on and what's, why it's necessary that we do this?
To be brief, um, and so, uh, these, these, these contracts are related to title funding. Um, they are for non-public schools, non-public and parochial schools. Uh, the district serves as a flow-through, uh, fiscal agent. So, we receive the money and then distribute the money to the schools as they see the need. So, the contracts are based upon needs identified by the school, I believe.
And this is mandated, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay, comments from the public? Okay, seeing no comment cards, we're back to comments from the board. Okay, seeing none, uh, entering into a vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Item 13, professional services contract, ANET. Consideration of a request for the approval of the professional services contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the following. A, ANET in the amount of $93,478.40 to provide benchmark assessments for grades nine through 11. Funding source, general fund. B, ANET in the amount of $192,678.40 to provide benchmark assessments for grades three through eight. Funding source, federal funds. Is there a motion? Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Lanis. Is there a second? It has been seconded by Mr. Lewis. We will now enter into comments from the board. Okay, seeing none, we'll move into comments from the public on item 13. Mr. Ma- Ms. Matthews? Sorry about that.
I would like to ask that the contract include a comprehensive summative at the end-of-the-year test, like the diagnostic is at the start of the year. So, to have a true pre- and post-test. Because we do not have that, is why I will never use ANET as my SLT, ever. Which is what a lot of principals would prefer people use. But, without it having a post-test, won't be me. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comment cards, uh, we will now return to the board. Mr. Martin?
Uh, I'd like to ask the superintendent or someone on his staff to comment to, to Ms. Matthews', uh, point, because I know we've had a number of conversations about, you have the testing, you have the assessment testing, the beginning, the middle, and then the end of the school year. So, could you touch on that?
Yes, Ms. Okoski from our accountability assessment team.
Good evening again, and thanks for the question. The simple answer is the vendor doesn't provide one. So, the, what the vendor provides is a diagnostic at the beginning and then a series of four interims. That really, um, think of the whole school year as a pizza and it cuts it into four segments. So, you incrementally assess the standards taught during the year. There's no summative at the end, because typically, we take LEAP the last month of the school year. So, that kind of becomes the summative at the end of the year. Uh, the question that Ms. Matthews posed has been posed throughout the, the two years of implementation by teachers. One of the things that we're working with ANET to do is to see if they could either customize some reports for us or put out a teacher guidance sheet on how our teacher could track certain standards throughout the year. So, it wouldn't be a true summative piece, but would give them summative data at the end of the year. There are, there's also a quiz tool embedded in ANET. So, when a student misses a question on a, a particular question or is struggling with a particular standard, they can go to that quiz tool and create their own assessments to reteach or reassess. So, one of the other things that we're looking at is asking them to possibly do an instructional video for us as to how us as staff could create one of those or teachers could create their own. So, this is something we've, we were discussing with ANET, try to work through. But the simple answer is they don't offer a summative at the end.
Are there, are there competing services that do, presumably?
So, the, the issue with assessments is that the Louisiana Department of Education rates assessments. And anyone can go to their materials review page and see how assessments are rated. Their highest level is Tier One. You only have a handful that are rated Tier One. So, when you look at the major competitors for ANET, or if you look at the one that most of the other districts in the state are using, which is LEAP 360, there's not a summative there either. And so, one of the reasons why we selected ANET, because it was rated Tier One in grades three through eight. It got a high-quality rating by the Department of Education. And, uh, in that rating, they assess the quality of the texts, like an ELA that they use. They also look at the design of the assessment items to see if the students will be using those same tech tools that are simulated or similar to what they use on the actual test.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Okoski, I have entered into the queue as well. I just wanted to ask, I've, I've been following, um, some of the benchmark assessments that are given throughout the state, but I'm, I'm unaware of this portion. I wanted to know, is ANET the company that is pretty much like recommended by the state?
So, if you go to the materials review, you'll see that there are two or three vendors there that have been rated Tier One. ANET is one of those that has.
Okay, okay. So, that was my question. Thank you so much. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, all right, we will now entertain a vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. So, we have, uh, pulled item 14, and so, we now move to item 15, policy JGBA recess. Consideration of a request for the approval of policy JGBA recess. Is there a motion on?
So, Vice President Powell, uh, Mr. Martin's motion placed this item on the agenda from a previous meeting. Uh, after some discussion, uh, and because this is a committee of the whole meeting, he's asked that we defer this item if there's no objection from the board, um, that we defer this item for 30 days to allow for further study, feedback, and information.
Okay, so, is there any objection from the board? Okay, seeing none, we will defer for 30 days. This is item 15. Okay, moving to item 16. Thank you. 2023-2024 Board Meeting Calendar. Consideration of a request for the approval of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board meeting schedule for the 2023-2024 school year. Is there a motion? Okay, it has been moved by Ms. Stewart. Is there a second? Okay, it has been seconded by Mr. Baloo. Comments from the board? Okay, all right, um, seeing none, we will then move to comments from the public on item 16. Ms. Matthews?
I would just like to point out that you guys have a regular meeting scheduled on the last day of, uh, teachers, May 23rd. Um, most likely, there's going to be a graduation on that day. So, at least, uh, the superintendent and whichever board member of that school will not be available on that night. So, y'all may want to think about that May 23rd one.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Ms. Corley?
Karonda Corley, parent and disabilities advocate. Um, whenever we're making thing, we're doing things such as calendars, policies, um, as it relates to the school system, you're supposed to have, uh, parent input according to Every Student Succeed Act, also known as ESSA, E-S-S-A. And I would like to question, what parental input did you have as it relates to the calendar? Um, I know that we also have to do a student rights and responsibilities handbook, not just for the school system, but also for each school. And we never follow ESSA. So, the calendar cannot be approved until we follow ESSA and actually get parental input. So, I'm gonna recommend to you that you actually defer the calendar, um, until you can actually have a community meeting to get parental input, because that's what Every Student Succeed Act states. It also states that you're supposed to hold 1% of monies, um, over, um, to be utilized for activities with parents, um, that deals with involvement, um, in regards to policy and stuff. So, that does not cover, like muffin with moms and donuts with dad, because clearly, y'all know we do not do policy during that time. But, I digress, right? Staying germane to the topic, we have to follow the federal law of ESSA and have parental involvement in a lot of these activities, including the calendar. And so, I do think that you need to defer it until you can actually either have a community meeting or you come up with a task force, which would actually make a lot of people upset if you do that, because then you're not going to actually have representation from the, um, 83 schools we have, um, as well as the disabilities community, because they are never represented on any of the committees that we've had thus far. So, that's what I would recommend to you. Thank you so much, and I'll be back for litigation.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, no, uh, no other comment cards, um, we will now return to comments from the board. Mr. Lanis?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Uh, both really good comments, um, from Ms. Storm Matthews. Uh, that was an excellent point. Uh, what typically happens in a situation like that is that because we're now going through Southern LSU, the whole graduations, they are willing to move those dates either up or change the date just to make sure that we don't coincide on the same day as a, a school board meeting. And for Ms. Karonda, um, this is, this particular item is speaking towards board meeting dates, not any school, uh, calendar or schedule. Uh, so, that's the only difference. I'll stop there, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments from the board, we will now entertain a vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Item 17, litigation. Consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendation from Gwen Shamlin, General Counsel, EBR, PSB, in the following man- matter. Alphabet A, Raisha Washington versus Cynthia Anderson and East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, docket number 703574, Section 22, 19th Judicial District Court, Parish of East Baton Rouge, State of Louisiana, and related matters. Alphabet B, Trish Train Young versus East Baton Rouge Parish School Board et al., suit number 639052, Section 27, 19th Judicial District Court, Parish of East Baton Rouge, State of Louisiana, and related matters. Is there a motion? Okay, it has been moved by Ms. Stewart and seconded by Mr. Martin. Comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, um, there is a comment from the public, Ms. Corley.
Karonda Corley, parent and disabilities advocate. Litigation is my favorite subject, because litigation is a problem. And we wouldn't have to deal with litigation if we would just do right and follow the law. Read, oh, Lord, read, reading is fundamental. Woo, and if we would just read, then we would not have to deal with litigation, because we would be following those laws that I talk about so much with my child, who, who seems to know a lot of them. And he likes litigation, too. So, um, pay the people, pay them, pay them. That's gonna always be my answer, my recommendation, pay them. Um, I'm gonna hate having to take you out of court in a few weeks, but it's gonna alw- it's, I mean, it's just simply because we won't do right, right? So, again, if we do right, we wouldn't have to kick out the money and this could be more money that we could use to pay our underpaid staff, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, bringing back our janitors. Um, we can give Mr. Shamlin a full Department of Attorneys to be up under him, so we could stop paying outside attorneys. I mean, I can come up with all kinds of things that we can do with the money, but instead of paying people, just because we won't follow the law. So, again, pay the people, because we not following the law. And every time we break the law, we might as well just pay them, so we don't have to keep going back and forth in court, because that's an extra unnecessary expense every time we go back in. So, pay them the first time, and then we don't have to keep paying all these other attorney fees, mental dis- mental anguish, emotional distress, pain and suffering, the list goes on and on. So, just pay them. And I'm gonna reclaim all the rest of that time for the next meeting, so that all this could just go in one lump, one lump, and I could just say approve it. Thank y'all, have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Corley. Okay, seeing no other, uh, comment cards, uh, we will now return to comments from the board. Okay, seeing none, we will entertain a vote.
Please vote.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lanis.
Real quick, Madam Vice President, I just want to say, I'm gonna use a point of personal privilege to say, you handled your business with this meeting. So now you have 17 items, and we're getting out of here almost an hour before it's time to go. I know we're not, but I didn't want to come on after, because I know that Mr. Gode loved to give the adjournments, so I did want to just let you know you did a great job tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
As another point of personal privilege, following it up with that, Ms. Vice President, may the fourth be with you.
Oh, Jesus, okay. All right, so we are now to item D, Presentations. Item number one, Development of a Calendar and Bell Schedule. The consideration that goes into the development of a calendar and bell schedule. So, presentation?
Yes, Dr. Robinson, our Chief Academic Officer, will come up and present.
Good evening, President Lanis, Vice President Powell, to the board members, and to Dr. Narcisse, Superintendent. Good evening. So the presentation that we are providing this evening is a replica of what we've already presented, but we have made some additions to it to address some of the concerns, and hopefully those will be addressed tonight. So, the state of Louisiana has Bulletin 741, which requires all LEAs, which is the school system, to adopt a calendar each year. And we have to ensure that we have a minimum of 63,720 minutes of instructional time. You'll also notice that there are three main lenses here. And we have to also ensure that for our nine-month employees, our teachers, our certified people, that they are working 182 days. And then we also ensure that the stakeholders have input into the calendar. And so I do want to once again thank our Teacher Advisory Committee, which is Dr. Narcisse's committee, and we meet with them basically monthly. And they give, have provided feedback, recommendations, suggestions to us. And then we go back and make those changes. We met with the Parent Advisory Committee. Very same process. We met with the Principal Advisory Committee. Same process. We did have some students that were, that provided feedback through their surveys. And then also, we met with the teacher unions. And so in meeting with all of these different committees, we allow them to, we kind of charted out, allow them to provide the feedback. They vote, they give suggestions, and then we've also done a survey that we sent out to all of our constituents as well. So if you go to the next slide, these are just some basic notes, some of the things that I've kind of repeated. Looking at number two, and board members, you should have received this electronically as well. You can click on the Carnegie unit, and you can look at Bulletin 741 for yourselves. Section 2314, specifically around the Carnegie units in the current calendar, the first semester, which is what we needed to correct, and we did do that. There are 42 A-days. We use an alternating rotation, right? So if you start school on an A-day, the next day is B-day. We continue to go throughout the year, doing following that same pattern. There are two nine weeks that constitute a semester, two semesters that constitute a year. And then any other references that you may have, you can also refer back to Bulletin 741, and looking at Section 333. If the, the next slide, again, this, these were the surveys that we, the survey that we put out. And we surveyed parents, we surveyed students, support staff, teachers, administrators. Even people at Central Office participated. You'll notice, though, that we had 4,388 of our scholars that actually participated. And I actually read their comments. They were very interesting, a lot of their comments. But they were students, they're scholars, and so, and they, and they were quite direct about some of the things that they wanted, and we definitely took into consideration that as we were looking at all of this. And you'll see that Option A, which is the calendar that the board has already approved, is the calendar that is now on the website for the public to view. And we have 73% of the participants that participated in the survey and actually voted for that calendar. And the responses were 6,959 of those responses. The next slide, actually, as we went over this before, in this presentation, it says draft, but it is, has already been approved by you. Thank you, because there are a lot of things that we have to do, and we rely on that calendar to get it done. Not to mention that other districts around us wait for our calendar to ensure that they have their calendar. And so when you look at the next slide, this is the life of a child on an AB block. This is, this is a sample, right? And so you will notice that in this sample, you will see transition times. You will also see the length of class periods, which is 97 minutes. The start and end time of schools, and you'll also see, also see the lunchtimes that are included in here with the recess for our middle school scholars. And you'll also see the alternating day, AB schedule, so that you can see that. And the last slide is just an example of a typical life of an elementary scholar in our district, and what that particular schedule could possibly look like. Now, all of our schools, we are trying to do the best we can with norming some things, but there are times when some things may have to be altered to support whatever's happening in that building. But we do try to keep and do mandate for them to keep the 97 minutes. And that's because of the Carnegie unit time. If we do not do that, we will have to do something different, and that may, could be an extension of school and all that, and we don't want to do that. So, we have to make sure we are in compliance with the minutes. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much, Mr. Robinson. So we have Mr. Lanis. You're in the queue? Okay, all right, Mr. Martin.
Thank you very much, Vice President Powell. Thank you, Dr. Robinson. A couple of questions. How many days are the kids actually in, in school under this calendar? If I remember, my counting is like 168, or somewhere in that ballpark.
So I could think 180, it was 180 days that they're actually in school.
They're actually in school?
Yes.
Not the, when I was looking at this a few weeks ago, that's not, that's not what I came up with, but, but, but what? I know when we talked about this, the day we adopted the calendar, I know there were several concerns expressed that this was fairly compressed, and that the compressed, you know, kind of, you know, the start date of the school year, the end date of the school year, and the number of, of non-instructional days that we had in there, whether for holidays, for teacher professional development, or whatever, led to a very compressed, you know, it kind of was one of the driving forces in having to squeeze, you know, have 97-minute instructional blocks instead of 90, the more common 90-minute instructional blocks, and things like that. Could, could, could you speak to the drivers, those drivers that can? I understand very well the number of instructional minutes required and whatnot, but what are the drivers that kind of compressed that schedule a little bit and forced us into these 97-minute, you know, and, and all the, the time constraints that went into the bell schedule that inhibited finding time for recess and stuff like that? What, what, what was driving that?
So, the 97 minutes, that comes about when we look at the number of minutes that are, that are required for each particular class, right? So if you look at this, at the page that has instructional notes, you'll notice that we have, what is it? Let's see. I don't think I'll put it on here, but it's three, yeah, it's 3,983 minutes that are required for a half Carnegie unit. So your driver is gonna be primarily because of the secondary high school, which is required. And again, if we do not meet those minutes, then kids are short. Then that means that we have to look at other options, because they have to have that seat time. And it's really about the seat time. And so when you look at the number of minutes for a half Carnegie unit, and the total is 7,00966 for the year. And so we, programming, we have to ensure that we have enough time for students to be able to elective courses. All of those things go into looking at the master schedule, right? We have to look at the fact that we have students that are in ESS. We have students in ESL. We have students that are in AP and honors classes. All of those things ban, all of those classes impact how we create the schedule. Typically, it may not be the norm, but typically, when you're doing a master schedule, you're going to look at those particular groups of students, given that they impact the master schedule significantly. And usually, we're gonna start when we do it, we're usually gonna start with our ESS students, and some of the other ones, right? And then we start looking at programming. What programs are within those schools? And the number of students that are enrolled in certain programs, the number of sections that we're gonna need for that particular class. If it's a certain number of students, we have to look at how many it is. That determines the number of sections we will have. That determines how many teachers we're gonna need around staffing. Then that looks, that then crosses over into your budgetary constraints as well.
So, so let me ask it this way. How do we start, how, how do we decide what day schools going to, what day schools are gonna open and what days schools are gonna close in August?
Okay, that, that becomes a decision of the local LEA.
Us?
Yes. And so I've been in states where it is mandated by the governor as to the start of school, but not the end of school. We're not in that particular situation, so it is, it is contingent upon the local LEA to determine that.
So in preparing the Option A and Option B, which were the two focal points of, of all of the discussions with the stakeholders, right? Then how did, how did our team decide on these particular dates that were in this calendar that we voted on a month ago?
So as we met with various committees, we were looking at the fact that we know, based on what teachers shared in our committee meetings, we do not want to be in school beyond Memorial Day. There are certain things that teachers provided to us to say, hey, we really want this, we don't want that, and this was based off of what happened last year. So when it comes to this year, we used all of that feedback to help us in determining that. Then we were looking at the start of school in terms of that front-loading those days on the front. We know that typically, we're gonna have five days at a minimum of what we call pre-planning. And we try to ensure that students, I mean, that schools have at least two of those days. Our teachers, the time for them to prepare classes, classrooms, is another issue that was brought about, so we ensured that we had that time built in at the front of the school year. But, we know that they don't want to be in, they don't want to start school in July, all right? And I've been in districts where, where we do that as well.
I'm not advocating that, just to be clear.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not either.
Remember, Martin, I wouldn't advocate that either.
But the, we listen to the feedback from teachers, and then, you know, you have a certain number of days of the year that you must be in school. And all of those things, exams, the various holidays, all of those things go into play when you're creating the schedule. And so you begin to kind of almost map from the middle forward and middle to the end. But that, all of those different pieces go into determining. But we know, based on what teachers, based on what parents are telling us, that we don't want to be in, we don't want to start school before a certain time. Now, there have been some, some questions in terms of, you know, can we start a week later? But if you're starting a week later, you're gonna have to give us something in a schedule and in a calendar. So if you don't want to start before a certain time, but you also don't want to end by, you want to end by a certain time, you're gonna have to figure out, how do we get all of those days in there and still give you the holidays? And one of the things that we do not do in Louisiana is we don't mess with the Christmas holiday. Teachers want two weeks off, and they want it off uninterrupted. So we already know those types of things. We know that Mardi Gras, the day after Mardi Gras, a lot of teachers want that off. There's been some debate around that, not in a, in a bad way, but there's been some debate around, you know, do we have that day off after? And then when, understanding the culture that we are in, some teachers are gonna tell you flat out, I'm not coming to work the day after Mardi Gras. So this is things that, and, and I know it sounds funny, but there are things that culturally, culturalistically, that we have to respect when we're doing a calendar. It's not built around adults. We're focused around teaching and learning, but we also have to be aware of culturalistic things as we're also doing that. So it's, a lot of that goes into, when do we start? When do we end?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I think my question has been answered. So, I appreciate your, your comments and your presentation. All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, all right, thank you so much. Okay, final item of the night, Announcement of Meetings. Our regular board meeting will be held on May 18, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. in the Central Office Boardroom. Committee of the whole meeting to be held on June 1, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. in the Central Office Boardroom. Mr. Gode? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Enjoy your evening.